Good evening, good evening.
Yeah, I love my idea.
I'll go look at the clock in the other room and see if he's ready.
There you go. Take one and pass it down.
Michael, do we have these in hard dollars? Or is it... Oh, this one isn't hard dollars. I mean, numbers because of...
This is not our... This is...
Everybody, the mics are on and I think we're on the air. Boy, that quieted the doors down, didn't it? Well, it's 6:30 Tuesday, January 12th, 2016. This is a city council study session. And we have an agenda that has been established for it. And we have four items we're going to be talking about tonight. Two of them are folks who have come in, asked to come in and make a brief presentation on things that are... involve Littleton. That's Item A, Young Voices with Gina Dickey and B, North Littleton Promise with Maureen Shannon. And on the agenda, I have 10 minutes for each of their presentations, plus whatever time it takes for a couple of questions. We're going to talk on Item C about housing in Littleton. And that's going to be a real... A real topic for thinking out where we're going and how we're going to get there in this... In this housing... In these housing issues. So hopefully, we'll finish that discussion with more questions than we do answers. And perhaps identify some study sessions or some issues that we would like to know more about. And then Item D is the City Manager update on the Enzo property. And that'll be a presentation by the City Manager. So with that, Gina is here. And Gina, did you get your...
I think I was set.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to introduce Gina Dickey with Young Voices.
Thanks for saying my name right. I guess I've lived here long enough that everybody knows. Anyway, good evening and thank you for having me here and giving me this opportunity to speak to you about a subject that's very near and dear to me. My name is Gina Dickey. I've lived in Littleton for almost 40 years. And although it says on your agenda, and it was just announced, that I'm representing Young Voices of Colorado, which I'm the founder... Of which I'm the founder and the artistic director. That's not really exactly right. Young Voices is a recipient of SCFD grants. And we are very, very thankful. We're very, very lucky and we have great support from SCFD. So please don't take this as a complaint because I am very, very thankful of what we have. But I am... Tonight, I would like to represent the interests of the other citizens of Littleton and Arapahoe County who paid very generously into SCFD and should be getting back. My friend Susan Honstein and I are representing FACE. That stands for Friends of Arts and Cultural Equity. A group of concerned citizens that is working toward a new and improved version of SCFD that will better serve all of our citizens. We realize that you've heard about the proposal the SCFD Board and their task force gave. It was widely distributed last year and people were asked to sign in favor of it. But there's a lot of information that's missing... That was missing from that piece... That document. Therefore, we'd like to give you some cold, hard facts of which you may not be aware. Basically, we believe that a better SCFD is possible. The timing is perfect now to improve on a system that was invented 28 years ago and will go on for another 14 years in the end of the future. That's 42 years. We need to look at what's happening in the middle. History shows that the large Tier One institutions were on the verge of financial ruin in 1988 and they needed a bailout. But 28 years later, with the help of SCFD, they have not only recovered, but they've gained wealth and prosperity with new buildings, fabulous infrastructure, and healthy endowments and foundations in their names. So now, we believe it's the time to adapt this fabulous model to fit the needs of the growing metropolitan area and changing community. We are concerned about fairness, structure, and accountability. Since 1988, our region has grown by over a million people, mostly in the outlying counties. And we continue to lead the nation in growth. Our population has become more diverse culturally and economically. And all communities within the region derive benefit from sharing talent and culture with each other and mutually benefiting from the funds collected and distributed by the SCFD. Today, we are no longer an urban core with suburbs a few minutes from downtown. We're a vibrant collection of cities with their own economies, their own quality of life enhancements, their own science and cultural offerings, and their own need to provide arts and culture to their residents on a regular basis near home. What served our citizens best in 1988 is not what serves them best in 2016. And it certainly won't be what serves them best in 2030 when the new authorization sunsets. Again, 42 years after the initial plan was designed. This tax will generate over $850 million in the next 12 years. And there is currently no reporting mechanism. The Board is appointed, not elected, and has no governmental oversight. But we can fix this system by asking our legislators to amend the proposed legislation and put some safeguards in place for the people and the community served. Sorry. The SCFD tax was created in 1988 and its first grants were issued in 1990. The legislature's first attempt to set up this district failed because they realized early on that it would not pass the voting public as a tax to benefit just those large organizations downtown. So it took an extra year to make it palatable by putting tiers two and three, that is, the medium-sized and the smaller community-based organizations into the plan. The plan was reauthorized in 1996 and again in 2004 with very little change in the formula despite all of the region's growth. The 2014 grants distributed this past fall accounted for $52 million. SCFD organizations are divided by size and income. Although the five Tier One organizations are defined in the legislation and no organization can ever be added to the top tier. There are currently 28 regional organizations. And I've listed some of those. Colorado Symphony and Ballet and, of course, our own Hudson Gardens. And then there are 276 smaller community-based organizations in Tier Three. The Littleton organizations are Town Hall, Arapahoe Phil, Littleton Community Music Association, Littleton Symphony Orchestra, Magic Moments, Carson Nature Center, Littleton Corral, which has recently changed its name to Voices West, and Young Voices. Let's see. Oh, I'm going to direct your attention now to the handout of the SCFD pyramid. And pardon me, I'm not a... I'm not a technical wizard or a graphics designer. So I had just put together this little tier to show you the number of organizations in the current SCFD plan. The numbers on the left of the page show the numbers of organizations in each tier back in 1989. And the numbers on the right side show the number of organizations in 2015. Note that legislation in 1996 allowed the DCPA to move from Tier Two up into Tier One. And the percentages were adjusted upward for Tier One at that time. Okay, and that showed you that growth, sorry. At the same time, the number of actual organizations increased. Attendance at events also increased. This is a little chart that shows the growth of attendance in each tier over the years. So you see that Tier One attendance grew from 3 million people to 5 million or a growth of 65%. Tier Two audience grew from 2 million people to 4 million, so a growth of 100%. And the little Tier Three guys grew from 535,000 to 400 and... Four... Sorry, 4.5 million or 736%. So Tier One increased its audience by 65% over 24 years, while Tier Three increased its audience by 736%. Now here's what's interesting about the growth of the organizations and the way the growth dilutes the grant money. While Tier One continues to divide the pie into five slices, the others of us get smaller and smaller slices of pie each year. Your handout with this graph that looks like this is a little bit... Excuse me, easier to read than this one on the screen. So if you look there as I tell you about this, you can see that the blue line at the top of the paper and the red line here follows the economic growth of the region over the last 24 years. And because Tier One membership has remained static, their annual grants have also increased according to the economic growth of the area. Their grants grew much faster than inflation because the Denver area was growing outward and adding taxpayers as well as prospering. And the tax base greatly increased. And of course, you can see the drop in 2008 and 2009. While the SCFD grants to Tier Ones increased threefold over this time from an average of $2.2 million per organization per year to $6.7 million per organization per year. The grants to Tier Two organizations, which is the second line down, it's orange up here and red for you guys, decreased from 583,000 to 390,000 per year. And down at the bottom, the green line or the yellow line up here, you can see what happened to Tier Three. Not much. There are actually grant dollar numbers... Oh, these are actually grant dollar numbers. So you can imagine how much worse it is for Tiers Two and Three when you adjust for inflation. But despite this injustice, here's what we were able to do. And here's where the people of the communities chose to spend their time. There are three measures of service which SCFD uses. The first is attendance. And you can clearly see that despite the uneven funding shown on the right side of the slide, Tiers Two and Three each served as many people as Tier One. It's almost an even split. The second measure is school programs. And you can... Oh, sorry. Well, then... Okay. Missing a slide, okay. The second slide is school programs. And again, it's about a third for each of the organizations. The third measure of service is the free admission days. And look who provides 53% of the free days to SCFD audiences despite our sharing only 13% of the money and dividing it with more than 250 other organizations. So now, what did our task force and Board propose to do to fix these injustices? They recommended that Tier One decrease their share from 65% to 61% while increasing Tier Two from 22% to 24%, Tier Three from 13% to 15%. You might think that that looks generous of them, but consider the growth of the number of organizations served and the slices of pie getting smaller and smaller. While Tier One stays constant, there are currently 31 small organizations that will likely gain entrance into Tier Three next year. So that number of 276 will be 307 next year. And of course, this will just continue. We need more and more of these small organizations at the region... As the region grows. I recently held a... I recently held a choir workshop out in the Bennett-Straussberg area, which is still in Arapahoe County. They are building 10 new schools out there in the next four to six years for planned growth. As elective officials who look out for the interests of your people in your area, I want to show you what went in and what went out. The red bars represent the money collected in each county. They're in alphabetical order. Adams, Arapahoe, Boulder, Brimfield, Denver, Douglas-Jefferson. The yellow bars show the attendance in each of the counties. And the orange bars show the amount of money that came back into the county. So it'll zoom in on Arapahoe County. We gave 20% of the... All of the money that went into SCFD in 2013, which is our latest year of figures. And we got back 3.2% of the grants. Note that our Urban Center Denver contributed 29% of the tax money, but they received over 82% of the grant dollars. For the second fastest-growing metropolitan area in the country, growing out and not in, and with all due respect to the icons downtown, they simply cannot serve the people as well as we can in our own neighborhoods. And they certainly cannot give our citizens their weekly or even daily need to be absorbed in the arts and culture. For the price of one ticket to the DCPA, I can go to Town Hall six times. Besides that, we community organizations engage people in the arts. I'm almost through. A redo of the SCFD proposal will support all tiers of the SCFD, preparing for the changing democratic demographics and appeal to the region's diverse voters. It would also encourage... It would also engage people in culture and let the children experience science, art, music, dance, and theater every week in their own communities. Here's what I mean by engaging people in the arts in their neighborhoods. This is a 40-second video. And the sound is going to be bad. Okay. We're not... Okay, now, we're not going to do that, all right? We'll go to the next one. This is a neat little video that shows art behind glass versus people exercising and dancing and doing theater in the community. It's beautiful. So, all I'm asking you tonight is to understand these points. And if you are so inclined, I would ask you to write your legislators... State legislators, don't get mixed up. The guys in Washington do not care about SCFD. And ask them to help us fix this thing. We can build a better SCFD. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Janet. We have time for just a few questions if there are any.
Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And now we have Maureen Shannon with the North Littleton Promise. And we've got to make sure the technology's going to work for you, so we'll give you a moment.
Just plug in, it would go. Oh, there he is. There it is. We're here. The test of a city's Wi-Fi. Hey, there it is, all right. I'm Maureen Shannon with North Littleton Promise.
Use the mic.
Oh, sure. I'm Maureen Shannon with North Littleton Promise. I have been living in this Littleton community for... Everything is marked by how old my daughter is, so 14 years. She's gone through Littleton Public Schools and I love, love this place. And I'm so honored to serve in this community. And I appreciate the work that you guys do. We serve Northeast Littleton... Folks in Northeast Littleton, kids and families there. Mostly immigrant kids and families in after-school programs. And I just included a little map there. And the little star on the map is the Living Word Tabernacle, which is the church that we use to run most of our programs. We... We're a Christian organization. We partner with 13 local churches. Littleton, One Inglewood Church. And it's... This is part of what it means to be a follower of Jesus. And so I just wanted to share a little bit there. And you can read for yourself and look those up. But part of the call from the Bible is to take care of immigrants in your midst and to also love your neighbors. And so that's really why we do what we do. I think sometimes we don't understand the strengths that immigrant families bring to our community. And so I wanted to make sure that I highlighted this. They bring healthy, intact families. The families that we serve are mostly Hispanic, mostly from Mexico. And they understand the concept of family that, like, we usually don't. So they live... They live close to one another, like extended families. Adult children all live close to one another. They support each other with childcare. They are very strong families. More the... The rates of single parent... Single parents are lower in immigrant families than they are in American families. They have a strong work ethic and aspirations. That's why that they come to the United States is to work hard and to make a better living. Community cohesion. They love their community and they love the relationships that happen within the context of their community. And they bring higher population growth to support aging... An aging population, which is part of the reason why even a couple Littleton Public Schools had to close not that long ago. But they boost our population. So it's a... It's a strength for sure. Now, the challenges that they... That they come with. Less educated parents. I know lots of families that don't have... Some didn't even finish the eighth grade. So much less high school or college. Low-wage work with no benefits. Many are working multiple jobs to put food on the table. They have difficulty speaking and learning English. Time constraints are pretty limiting for them. And so to attend even a weekly English class can be a challenge. And they have challenges raising their children and helping them succeed in school. They love... The families that I serve, we did this, like, informal Facebook poll to find out how many... How long they've lived in Littleton. And the majority of them have lived here between 10 and 15 years. And so they call Littleton their home. This is their community. They love the schools. They love this area. They're planted. They're rooted here.
Maureen, something jumped, so we're going to have Doug come back down and see if... If it's a short or if it's a unplug.
Just fell asleep.
There you go.
Sleepy Mac. It's securing affordable housing. You know, the rent... Rents have gone up all over the metro area and that's the same for here. Unfortunately, their wages have not gone up. And so it's very tricky to... To secure affordable housing for our families. Transportation is an issue, discrimination, racism. Very often, employers will take advantage of some of the parents that we serve because they think that they can. And poverty, multiple risk factors, and a lack of supports. So I found this resource that I felt like was really, really important for you to see. And this is called the Child Opportunity Map. It maps 19 different positive and negative factors in education, health and environment, and social... Social and economic factors. So, good and bad, it's all here. And I wanted you to see how Northeast Littleton fell compared to the rest of Littleton. You can see on the top, the scale, very high is the darkest red to very low is the lightest yellow. And Northeast Littleton is right up there. I've circled it for us. And it's in a low, low category. Now, what I want you to notice, there is another low opportunity area in the map that stretches down Santa Fe. But it has about 200 and some, 250 kids that live in that area. And the Northeast Littleton neighborhood has 1,361 children in the community. And it gives the ethnic breakdown here, too. So 548 white kids, 698, almost 700 Hispanic-Latino, mostly from immigrant families there. And you can see it. So the large dot is... Has to do with the Hispanic population in this... In this... No, it's the total child population. Let me show you the next slide. You can see the darkness of the dot has to do with how many children live in that census tract. And so Northeast Littleton has the most kids in one census tract than all of the city. Now, I understand that census tracts don't go with the Littleton city limits, but you can... You can see that it's pretty high. The second highest is Beaumar. They have about 1,100 kids in that census tract. So when we talk about opportunities for kids...
You're talking just the num... Sorry, you're talking just the number of children within the census tract?
Correct. So 1,361 kids that live in Northeast neighborhood. So when you're talking about low opportunities for kids, this is a huge, huge impact on a large number of children. So our priorities are faith, education, and leadership. We run after-school programs for 60 elementary and middle school kids. We run programs right now for 45 elementary and middle school children. We work in collaboration with Littleton Soccer. And so we have six teams. We recruit coaches. We recruit kids and put together the teams. And I can't even tell you the amount of community and that the families build with one another as they play from year to year to year because it's a beautiful thing. But kids learn about life on the field. And besides the fact that they love the sport in a way that I don't understand, they... They grow so much in their leadership and in their life skills just by playing a sport. And so it's a huge part of their leadership development, this piece. We just started this past semester doing a mom's Bible study. It was something that they had requested. And so we responded. We did a new business workshop, like a workshop for entrepreneurs because our families are really interested in starting their own businesses. And I don't know that you know this, but immigrants are twice as likely than... Twice... Twice as likely to start businesses than native-born folks. So immigrants are... They want to do new things and start new things. And so we wanted to honor that and give them some tools and direction. We have a parent leadership team. They plan our events. They do everything. We're really trying to build up our parents and help them to be leaders in the community. And then we're in the collaboration with the New Life Center, which is just off of Deetera for English classes. And we're exploring some other options to work with them over there. We're not in the business of competition. It's just silly. And so we'd love to partner with organizations and find out where our overlap is of mission and really work with them... Don't go to sleep. To benefit our community. I want to share one... This video with you about one of our families. It'll give you a little... A taste of what the families that we serve. It'll give you a little, a taste of what the families that we serve. It's plugged into the system.
We've been married for thirteen years. I work on cars. I do mechanical work, buying parts, selling parts, fixing cars. That's what I do. And I think she got the, the most unpaid and hardest job. She taking care of the kids at home. I think she's doing well.
It's the best that's ever happened in our life.
The kids, that's a life for me and her.
In that they're going on the right path. In that they're going, they're going to know that they're loved, that we love them. To make them understand what it is in reality of life, not what they think.
On our culture, the Latinos, we think because we are working, we are doing, we are giving the best to the kids, to the family. Money and work is not, not all the time the best. Your kid, he's never gonna, gonna remember the iPod, the iPhone, the nice shoes or nice clothes. The kid is gonna remember when you play with him, when you share the time, when you go in camping, when you hold him in your arms or when you played close to him, when you sleep with him, when you give him kiss. That's one of the things that he's never gonna forget.
With my kids, the time is mine, it's for them.
First time we hear about Littleton Promise, that was about a soccer team.
I don't play football, but it makes me excited. It's the best that's ever happened in my life, that my kids play football. It's my passion, to see them play, the three.
When she were young, at home, brothers and the father, they watching soccer all the time, all the time. She hates the soccer. And now she's excited. She's waiting for the day when they play.
North Littleton Promise is a program that maintains our kids in something good. That they maintain their mind, their heart with God. Because they talk very well about God. They're in those programs that we, as parents, at least like me, and I think that those that lead our kids there have their kids in, with someone, with someone who we can trust and be calm. It's for me, Littleton Promise. And I'm very happy and my kids are also, I know they're good there.
Sometimes parents, we get mistakes. We're not always, we're not perfect. And the kids are going there and they learn, learn a lot of things. They learn respect. They learn about faith. Sometimes the things that we forgot to tell home. So I think we need each other. And Littleton Promise has been helping a lot.
I'm very happy, I'm very grateful to him.
One of the reasons that she said this is also because she had a brother. He died because he was on drugs and not doing good things. But he were loving the soccer. He was a good soccer player. He never had the chance. He never has the support from anybody, not even the parents or somebody else. He decided run and he paid for that. I think every kid that came to play soccer is one kid that we take him out of the streets. Being a gang member, that's a kid that we can take him out of the drugs. One player on the field is one kid out of the street. It's gonna be awesome. When we start to meet North Littleton Promise, we think it's gonna be just soccer. And now it's, it's completely different. North Littleton Promise is for us like a family. It has to, it has to came from, from the top, from God. We've been married for thirteen years.
So I just looked on your website, what your goals are for this community. And, and I underlined the ones that I felt really affect our, the northeast Littleton kids. And so you can, you can read those. Supporting public-private partnerships that foster mental and physical health, ensuring vehicular, bike, pedestrian safety and improving accessibility. Like I said, one of those challenges for our families is transportation. And so, so connecting them to the rest of Littleton is one of the buffers that can help because they're in a low opportunity area. So the better that we can connect them to the surrounding areas, the better. Which means, I don't know if you've ever noticed, if you've tried to cross Littleton Boulevard, somewhere between Bannock and DeTura, it is frogger. Okay. It is pretty scary. I've tried to push a stroller and a dog across the street and it's crazy. But that is important, actually. It's important to broaden, to connect that community to the rest of Littleton. It's very important. These are other goals that I feel like really apply to, to those residents. And I think that I would love it, I would appreciate it, if you would remember immigrant kids and families and the rest of the residents in northeast Littleton when you think about these issues. Affording, affordable housing availability and development plans. There's, there's land in that area that I'm sure will be developed at some point. Let's try to improve the quality of life for the residents, the kids, the thirteen hundred sixty-one children and their families, not gentrify the neighborhood and force them out. That is not what we want. You saw the Lopez family. They're quality people. Those are the families that we want in Littleton. That's who, that's who Littleton is. So some examples, early childhood centers, organizations like North Littleton Promise, who serve the kids and their families, healthcare providers, et cetera. I can give you that link for that Child Opportunity Map to see where we're lacking as well. Any questions?
Does council have any questions for Maureen? No, thank you very much. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break because we need to make some technology changes. We'll be back in five. Okay, we're about ready to get started again.
What did you sneak in?
I've been here the whole time.
I didn't see you come in.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm good.
Okay, we're about ready to get started again. This is item C on the agenda and it says, Housing in Littleton. And the, the housing challenges of any community are equal to the economic development challenges, the school challenges, the providing a quality of life challenge. It's just, it's just so integrated with everything that happens. When somebody says, hey, Littleton is a great place to live, I can guarantee you that the "live" includes the housing that they have and the people that they surround themselves with, the conditions of their neighborhoods. It's just a huge issue. So what we want to do is, and what I think our intent is, is to talk about the housing, but not, not so much down at the street level, but more maybe from the thirty thousand foot level. And to talk about, as we look at maybe twenty years out, what kinds of decisions and awarenesses should we have as a council today? What can we influence to make the difference so that the housing, wonderful housing we've all experienced is also available to those that follow us? So it's a, it's a grander discussion. The idea is not to solve problems tonight, but more to raise issues of perhaps what we need to study a little further, have study sessions. Maybe there's some areas we might want to know more about as we look at this as, as a significant area of study for city council and the leaders in Littleton. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think to, to reiterate some of what the mayor said, the intent here is not to talk about strategies for housing, but it's really to have the council have an open dialogue and discussion. And we've got lots of resources in the room. We've got some staff available to us. I'm gonna introduce our guests here in a second. But it's really to have kind of that capital H housing conversation and talk about all the various components of housing, the interconnectedness with transportation and, and jobs and economic development, education, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's all, of course, the different types of housing. There's the, the style of housing, the cost of the housing, the location of the housing. And rather than trying to drill down and answer any particular question, are we trying to fill something? It's to see where, where the council coalesces around different things. And as the mayor said, start to move into additional conversations, potentially other study sessions that do drill down into more information and potentially strategy. And so I think we're gonna do our best to stay at that higher level policy and move on from there. But again, we do have, we've got more data than we can cover tonight. But really looking for the council primarily. And I think Andy is gonna lead the conversation in trying to look at all those interconnectedness. And I realize you can't really read the, up on the screen there, but you all have at least handouts here and you might walk through. So we have Joe Hammett, who is our executive director of the South Metro Housing Options, and Andy Hancock, who's the chair of the board. And so turn it over to Andy.
Well, like you said, I'm the chairman of the board and thanks for the opportunity to talk to you guys. It's always fun to come down, it's always fun to come down here. I was talking to my son and he said, I don't, why do you get so excited about this? And I said, well, this is what Littleton's all about. It's people who care about the city and the community and getting together to try and discuss it to make it better. And he's in high school and he's kind of politically motivated. And he said, and that's better than the State of the Union address? But anyway, you know, we've had a couple of conversations and, and we're excited to help facilitate this kind of analysis of housing in Littleton because we believe that that's a key piece of the community. That's what makes us a community. That's important for Littleton to sustain itself, to sustain, sustain its uniqueness. And I think this is the first time this has been done. I haven't been here in my, all of Littleton's. But I think this is the first time we've actually looked at housing from an unbiased approach. No, no one has any ulterior motives here. It's just, what is our housing? How does it compare to other things? Where do we have deficiencies in that? And then from that, what do we need to do as a city to make sure that we maintain the housing that is in demand out there? How do we look into the future and see how we do that? And so we're here, I think, our main goal is to understand, because this is a big process and, and it is gonna be time-consuming and have a lot of factors to it, are there things that we need to guide or suggest or make sure that we cover in this kind of review of our housing? Questions that maybe you had on the type of housing or the rental housing or those kind of things, just so that we can get on the same page. Because, you know, we wanna get the most out of this report that we can. And so if we can just kind of have a discussion about housing and things that you think that we should guide this survey, not survey, but this report in so that we get the best report we can when we get it back. And I think that's kind of the goal of this discussion. And I guess, so money's been set aside to do this report.
So council authorized fifty thousand dollars to do a community-wide needs, housing needs assessment. One of the things we're gonna be, I think there's two outcomes tonight that we're gonna be, as staff, tracking primarily Joe and I, will be what components from the questions you all ask should be included within that scope. The housing authority will be, will be managing that study and then we'll jointly work together on the scope. And the other is, as I said, what are additional study sessions and information does the council want to learn about and delve into to a greater degree than what we do with this evening?
Can we ask questions and stuff now?
Yeah.
Yeah, the intent is just ask questions, talk about it, have a discussion, and see kind of where it leads us.
One of the things that...
And your microphone.
One of the things that I think we're challenged with now, and this is happening throughout the metropolitan area and really throughout the country, is the current housing stock, does it meet the needs of the population? So what do we, we know what it looks like right now, and we know what it looked like 50 years ago. What can we do now? What things can we put in place? What's within our ability and our control to do that would not leave a community in the same pickle 50 years from now? And maybe it's not 50, maybe it's 20, maybe it's 30. But we know that housing styles have changed, housing types have changed, housing costs have certainly changed, people live differently now. We also are dealing with, as Maureen said earlier, more of a diversity in our population who have a culture that works with housing differently than our culture. So I guess, you know, if we're going to look forward to what we can do, because we can't change what's yesterday, what does that look like? What, you know, what are the trends? What are the things that, if we ask someone to come in here and start building something that we need today, will it be something that can't be used in 20 years? You know, these nice little one-story bungalows that we have are not, unless they're in Wash Park, are not what people are chasing after right now. They're looking for different things. There's, I heard, and is Kay here? Kay Walton?
Yeah, Kay is here.
I was talking to her, and she said that the, what we're building on Littleton Village, that they're struggling because people are saying, well, I want a main floor master, I don't want a second. They're not even built yet, and we're missing needs. So I guess that would be something I think would be really important to learn about.
Yeah, I don't know how, because we've looked at a couple of studies. The most recent one was from Salt Lake City, and obviously a bigger metropolitan area. And they kind of analyzed it more as what do you, not necessarily product type, well, somewhat product types, but income levels, rent versus own, multifamily versus single family, where do you have deficiencies in that? Style-wise, I don't know how you could encapsulate that into, I assume that some of it would be done in zoning. I mean, they may give you some suggestions as to how your zoning might be, but I don't know, I don't know that I've seen a report that, you know, helps you, it's kind of more, this is where you are now, this is what the market is, and this is where you have deficiencies or possibilities or within that. But that's a good point, that maybe we could ask them to address, maybe go beyond, where do we not have flexibility in what we allow or what we do?
Well, I think one of the things that we kind of get stuck in is that we don't tend to stretch beyond kind of what we can feel and see. You know, I can see tomorrow, I can see next Christmas. But, you know, what does 20 years look like? I mean, you know, and it's different for, when you're 18, 20 years looks completely different than when you're 50, what your 20 years looks like. So as city planners, as city, you know, people come in and do a rezone. And so, you know, and I'm not making, I'm not being critical of the Marathon property, but it's a lesson, I think, because, you know, they want to build what's cool today. Well, it was cool last year, now this year, they're saying we want the main floor masters. And I think it's been longer than that. But I, it's not about so much the particulars of style or those types of things. It's about building the proper, you know, the proper type of housing, making sure that we are considerate of doing the right, making the right decisions in order to be able to kind of have a house last longer than...
I might just say that I think part of what you get from a study like this is if you have a company that goes out and looks at the existing landscape, a consultant that looks at the landscape, and then they will come back and talk to council probably several times throughout the study about policy options that you might have, what resources are available to you. And it's sort of an ongoing kind of thing until we get to the final report, so those things can be addressed, because not every community is going to have the same resources available. I mean, land is an issue for Littleton, there's not a lot of vacant land. But then you can start to think about implementing certain policies. Not, you know, the one that's most common is inclusionary zoning, but that's not appropriate for every community. So a good study will give you some options in terms of developing policy.
I think including information about demographic and sociographic trends, I think including, you know, employment is very different. And, you know, when I was growing up, there was Gates Rubber Company, and entire neighborhoods were employed by Gates Rubber Company. And it was, and they had a huge parking lot. And that was, and now they're building entire neighborhoods around people working at home. So what are those kind of, you know, is that going to trend out and go away? Are we going to start building industrial parks again? I mean, I think there's people who look forward, who look, who see trends moving. And I think, I think it would just be important for us to look a little bit beyond what we normally look at. I want to stretch a little bit further, look a little bit farther down the road.
And I think we could develop that scope however we want to do it.
Peggy, you had a question?
Well, maybe some comments. I'm a little confused about what we really can control and whether we have a problem. To the best of my knowledge, an awful lot of houses get sold before they even get put on the market, because people hear about them, and they want to live in Littleton, and they want to live where they buy that place. They love where they buy, at least a lot of the folks that I come across. So, and we're landlocked, and I'm aware that we've got a whole lot of space to build anything, for anybody to build anything. So if people love what they have, why would we want to be tearing it down or having, encouraging somebody else? Because people are loving where they are. Some of the places that don't look all that modern are very livable and even very efficient because of what people have done to upgrade them in terms of energy efficiency, water efficiency, and so forth. So I'm trying to grapple with whether we're trying to create a problem to solve. We already know we have a tremendous number of people coming to Littleton to work. So I'm thinking regionally, what the region, I don't know how big we will make the region, but from the region that people commute to Littleton to work, we're part of something larger. And it's not just us, but other communities that are providing housing stock, either because it's cheaper or because it's whatever it is. So I wish we could maybe start by defining or agreeing that we have a problem or don't have one.
I don't know that we're saying you have a problem. We're saying it's helpful to know where you're at.
Andy, if you could put your mic...
I don't know that we're saying you have a problem. I think, but we're saying it's helpful in anything to have information about where you're at, where you're at in comparison to other markets, and you could decide, I don't want to go that way. Where you're at in terms of how you meet the population that lives in Littleton. How, one of the things I think that would be very interesting is to understand how housing within Littleton affects employers within Littleton. How is that a driver? Is that important to them? And I look at this more as, this is our opportunity to get as much information as we can about housing in Littleton, because I think it's a key piece of our community. And how, do we need to make it better? Do we have a problem? Do we want to go this way? Do we want to go that way? Because there's all kinds of different avenues you can go.
So I guess part of what I was saying, when you want to know about the houses in Littleton, how do we get that? The real information about the houses in Littleton, other than just seeing them from the outside?
Yeah, the information that economic development...
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying.
What do you, what do you mean?
I mean, who knows what my house, how that accommodates me? What's, how I've shaped it, or the previous owner shaped it that serves my needs? I mean, if you have to get inside to kind of know that kind of stuff, I think...
I think part of the study, a part of the study includes the consultant meeting with focus groups. Some of those focus groups are residents, some of them are employers. Some of them are service providers. I mean, it's all part of a bigger picture, and it, that's how you get your data, is by talking to people and seeing how people are feeling. You have to look at the bigger whole to see how people are feeling about housing. Maybe you don't have a problem. Maybe the consultant goes out and does the surveys and the focus groups and comes back and says, everybody's just totally happy. Affordable housing isn't a problem in Littleton. I doubt that that would happen, but you don't know the answer. You know, you don't know what you don't know until you get out there and gather the information. And the best way to do that is for either a survey or, and part of it would be kind of like a survey, the focus groups would consist of a sort of a survey to get a cross-section of the community, see what's important to them.
So again, so with the, if I'm thinking regionally, again, we only have so much space in Littleton, it's pretty much built. So, and if we need more, then it's, the only thing I can hear, and I'm sorry my mind isn't thinking broader maybe, is to get something else, we have to change something that's here. And it seemed to me people love what they have. So if we need more affordable housing, maybe it has to come from a nearby neighborhood, a nearby community rather than Littleton.
And I think that's a decision that the leadership of this community has to make in terms of, do you want people living in the region surrounding Littleton? Or do you want them to be, do you see housing as part of your community? Quality housing? Because there is aging housing stock in Littleton, and that may be a problem. I know it's a problem for us, because the housing that we built in the 70s, you know, is becoming obsolete, and it's difficult for people to live in our housing, that, much of which is tri-level duplexes, and it's difficult for them.
Bill, let me pass around to another question, otherwise we just won't have enough time tonight.
If I hear what you're doing, there's really a marriage between housing, transportation, and economic development. These all go together, and I don't think that it would be appropriate to talk about tearing something down. Nobody cares, in fact, Peggy, I don't know, I don't want to know what happens in your house sometimes. But it's okay. I think, you know, we need to look at a really high level of things in terms of what is it that we want to go to over the longer term? Are there economic, demographic, sociographic trends that come in that tell us how to plan for the future in the sense that, should we change our zoning in certain areas? Nobody's going to go in and tear down anybody's house. But if somebody has, we'll choose the example of obsolete shopping centers, it's another thing that we have going on. We can all point to several of them around here. Maybe that's at the end of its economic lifetime. Maybe a consultant comes in and says, and we don't know the answer to any of these, but maybe they come in and they say, you know what? This is a prime location for future housing, and it would be retail, and we can get retail in, and we can also have a new type of housing that reflects the trends that are coming down that sociographic highway, that we need to plan for so that Littleton stays viable. My question is, why does so many people come into Littleton to work instead of living here and working here? We need those people. There's a cross-section between the economic success of an area and the success of retail, which is our tax base. If you look at Cherry Creek North, they've had tremendous revitalization of housing stock, which has fueled the success of their retail and made that entire area more viable. We don't know what that looks like in the long run. Maybe that's appropriate here, maybe it isn't appropriate here, but we need to identify the longer-term trends that do that. What's our, do we have the right mix of things that we could lay out a formula for the future that would attract people? If people come into town, one thing that Littleton is famous for, I think, is we are reactive in our development process. Somebody comes in, proposes a development, and we say, oh, golly, it's a use-by-right, or it's not a use-by-right, and we have to react to it. We need to be proactive and plan these things over the long run, instead of watching what people bring to us. There was a lot of consternation about the Grove. Had we had a proactive planning process, we may have said, we need bigger setbacks, I don't know what all the issues are. But we may have been able to prescribe that. It fit the courthouse better, it was better for that part of town. These are the kind of housing stocks that we need. This has got to be a big-picture thing, not about any modification of our existing stock. This won't affect most of the people that are in this room or live here. We need to see where this all goes in the future. This is, there have been studies done, and I handed one out earlier, or last year, Oklahoma City, Lenexa, Kansas, places that I've worked recently that have these beautiful plans where they set expectations, if a developer comes in, this is the kind of stock that would work well to complement our community, to grow our retail, to grow our housing stock, to increase our quality of life. Lakewood is doing these. They're way ahead of us. Other communities around, I think Wheat Ridge has got one, and I'm losing track of all the ones that have them, but this is the kind of thing we need, instead of being reactive and letting it happen to us. We need to have citizen involvement, the staff involvement, council involvement, so that we can draw this vision, so that people who come here know what to expect. It's our vision, it shouldn't be theirs.
And I would say that I think, maybe it's a bad word, but the city of Boulder has an, is a good example of that, because they set out and say, because the thing that we all, the reason we're all here is we love Littleton, and it's a great community, and it's unique. Boulder's the same way, it's a unique community. And sometime, I don't know the history of it, but at some point, they said, this is what our city's going to look like. And we're going to make a plan for it, and when people come to develop, they got to follow this plan, because we're Boulder and we're special. And I know people don't like that all the time, but it's a vision. And it's based on a feeling that they want to keep it unique, and they want to make it a unique place to live. And that's what we need.
Andy, I couldn't agree with you more. And it was interesting, because those of us who just got off the campaign trail, and all of us have relatively recently, within the last few years, so many people say they want to preserve Littleton's character. Well, my wife and I were campaigning opposite sides of a street. We'd get to the end of a street, we'd say, so, you know, we heard it from, I don't know, pick a number, five people on that street, you'd probably get five different answers as to what that looks like. We need to have the community conversation to help us define that. And it's going to have different amorphous pieces, but my guess is we can put it together with the help of good professional talent and good, honest community dialogue, so that we're prepared for the future rather than reacting to it. And it includes the affordable slice. And the affordable slice is maybe a pro-rata share. We don't know what that looks like, and we need your help to define where, you know, where your needs are, where you perceive your needs are. You know, how's the single-family thing doing on affordable housing? Is that a maintenance problem? Do we have, are there more weed citations of affordable housing areas or not? Maybe they take better care of it. I don't know. But we need those answers.
Got to pass it on to Phil.
Sure. You know, I start off, and I look at where Littleton has been to get us to here, and what are some of the things that still make Littleton, at least today, attractive, but may not fit all of the profile for what we may have as a high-level vision going forward. For example, we had lots of space, and we, but Littleton over the years has continued to have a high level of diversity in housing that's present. We have a demographic... We have a demographic, and a year and a half ago, we had the state demographer come in that says, you know, the folks that are really trying to move into Littleton are the ones that have, now have two kids, and they're the young family trying to add. We have folks that are in Littleton that want to relocate in Littleton to something that might not be as maintenance-intensive as, as where they've been. How do we deal with all of this and, and be intentional as to what we may want to consider, both with regard to programs, but also the framework, whether it's, it's zoning or processes? I mean, we've made it with the help of staff, a little bit easier for folks to reinvest in their homes and go through the permitting process to have that. I think that's, I think that's good, but you know, that, that takes us down a particular path so that folks are in a position of reusing the stock that's, that's there. And I, I think that's, that's good, but one of the things that has, has come up in some of the discussions around the 2040 plan at the region level is the concepts of walkability and mobility, where we have a tremendous level of housing stock that was built between the fifties and the eighties, that is built and is very automobile-centric. That puts some pressure on what might be some of the alternatives that are out there, and we don't want to be, I don't think we, we win by being an island necessarily that gets bypassed, so I think we want to continue to do that. And we're, Littleton and its value proposition, we continue to have very attractive schools. We tend to have a great mix of open space and trails and some of that connectivity, and we're going through some master planning on that level. So there's a number of things that are happening, but what we have the opportunity to do is to be with some, some knowledge and discussions, get to the point where we're being intentional. To some extent, some of the criticism we've had is, how come we didn't anticipate some of the, the things that have happened? And we'd like to get on the other side, at least from my perspective, I think we'd like to get on the other side of some of that curve and at least put those, those thoughts out there and have that dialogue and, and that participation. Some of the things that, you know, we have taking a look at, and Bill's right, and that housing, transportation, and economic development all get related. When we went through the Open Space Task Force, you know, we have a balance of residential, commercial, and parks and trails, and you know, that, that three-legged stool stands pretty well, has stood pretty well. We want it to continue to, to stand very well. The aspect of, of ownership versus retail isn't as much a question in my mind, but is a question that I get from some folks in the community that, that have some, you know, they attach certain values between ownership versus rental. I'm not sure that sustains. And being in a position where I would have loved to have had my, my daughter relocate inside of Littleton, but with five kids, couldn't find affordable housing or a housing that she, was attainable for her. And so I, and it's, it's kind of the appropriate housing, I'll, I'll put it that way. And, you know, over the years, the, the Housing Authority has helped to contribute to some of that diversity. We've continued to somewhat have the principle of decentralization of subsidized components, which I think is, is good and healthy. But then HUD is out there talking about supportive communities around that, the affordable side, so we're kind of running counter to some of what the, the support community thoughts are. You know, is that good or bad? Is that, is that consistent with our values, or is it something we need to be thinking about a little bit more? We've put some things before the planning board in taking a look at ADA, accessory dwelling units, ADUs, excuse me, ADUs, and that, and you know, how, how does that fit into the housing mix? And we have some, some pieces in our ordinances where more than two unrelated adults in, in a, in a single-family home is not something that is consistent with our ordinances. Are these things that kind of come up and butt up against the, you know, what might be what we're looking for, for folks to be comfortable and our neighborhoods continue to be safe?
Let me jump in, just a couple of thoughts. The average age in Littleton now is 45. The fastest-growing demographic area will be 55 and older. Our houses increased in value 15% in the last year, and the average cost of a house is about $380 something, $380,000. And when we look at the sustainability of that, that is a concern. It's great, because we, if, if we're a homeowner, it's great. If, if we want to live in our house for another few years, that's great too. We're not really talking about that. But the other figure is, they haven't built townhomes in Colorado to any, to any level since 2008 because of the construction defects, but we have townhomes in Littleton, and that, that's, that is a good thing. You know, so just a lot of things boiling around. I wanted to ask Kay to, Kay to come up and talk about what we were just noodling around, and that is, what is it that somebody's looking for in a home, and why would they choose Littleton or not choose Littleton, and can we meet their needs? And Kay, if I could ask you to just, we've got a chair up there, and she can, if you'd borrow Flo's mic, and, and talk a little bit about the reality of today and what you see in the near future.
Well, I'm a Littleton citizen, and I'm, I'm a Littleton citizen, and I love this town for sure, and I'm a Realtor. So I'm out there just like several others here who are Realtors every day, and when I pulled today, we have 25 available properties in Littleton today on the market. That's condos, townhomes, and a single-family. And so when I look at that, that is so limiting. And so I do think that what Bill was talking about, looking, doing some kind of a study so that we don't have to react. We have a plan, and we can go out and we can say, this is what we need. Now, it may not be tomorrow, it may not be five years, but we know what our plan is because we do have land, we have some shopping centers that, like Bill said, maybe they're, they've seen their day, and we can develop those into something that is basically a need that we have. Now, the Littleton Village, I think, is great. It's not going to serve the community for those 55 and older. It's those that want to move out and have a patio home. I think that is something on a higher level that we need to plan for. And I just happened today, I'm on the Smart Growth Advisory Board for the National Association of Realtors, and I got a grant request from Traverse City, Michigan. And this fits right in with what we're talking about because they have asked for a grant to conduct a market analysis for retail, office, and housing, exactly what we're talking about, because they realize that they want to not react, but they want to plan, and it's probably going to mean some zoning changes, it's probably going to mean some policy changes. And I think those are the kinds of things that we need to be forward-thinking when we're looking at a higher level so that we can anticipate, you're never going to know exactly what the demographics are going to be, but I think we have seen, I'm also on the Littleton Public School Foundation Board, and when I hear that we have 50-some-odd languages over at Newton Middle School, I was astounded. So our demographics are changing. They're, I mean, faster than we can even think about. And so, Phil, I think what you said about some of our regulations and our zoning where, what about some of these larger lots? Do we allow for someone to come in and build a studio on that lot, which would give additional housing, possibly for a, a parent to move close to where their kids live? Do we allow for that? Is that in our zoning? I mean, I think those are the kinds at a higher level that we need to look for, and, and we need to go out and look at some of these other communities that have, are really planning. You can't, we just can't throw mud on the wall and expect it, you know, to get good results. And I think for too long, we have just had to react and not really planned. So I think that there's, and I think public, private, that what they're doing, they have partnered with their Traverse City Light and Power, and they're doing this study because they realize that, the power company realizes, that they have issues in their community. So they have partnered now with the Realtors, with their city, and gotten this grant, and I would say that if we, it's $50,000, and I would love to write a grant to NAR for us to get another $10,000 to add to that so that we could do even a, a bigger study, a better study. And I think bringing the community together and having some open dialogue. I mean, we talk a lot about being transparent and getting community input, and I think we have an opportunity here with focus groups to really bring this community together and sit down with open minds, don't go in with any agendas, and just say, okay, what do we want our community to look like? And what are the needs that we see now? And we know that we have one of the best school districts in the nation. It's not, we don't advertise it well enough, I don't think, but I think that if we're going to maintain that, then we have got to really look at this. A good school district will mean a good city because people move here because of schools, not just because of that, but that is one thing. And I think the partnership that we've seen recently with our school district and the city is wonderful. So I just applaud you all for starting this discussion because I think it's something that's been needed for a long, long time. And when I'm out, right now, I don't have anything to show. I'd love to show something in Littleton. So if any of you want to put your stuff on the market, we'll sell it immediately. Any of us will, but we, we really, and I think when we look at having rentals, you know, if you only have 25 available properties, you've got to have rentals. If people move into those rentals and they love it here, I can guarantee you, they'll be your next people that will be purchasing, and they'll be your roots here in this city. So I'm not against rentals at all. I think that that is a first step for many of our, particularly younger people, and even our immigrants. That's a first step for them, if they can find, if there is affordable rentals for them, because then they will get ingrained in the community, and they will love it here, and this will be where they'll want to stay and raise their children, and you know.
Kay, Kay, one of the things that is, has been a goal of council, you know, is we want to create a better situation for people to be able to stay in their homes as long as they'd like to stay in them. And there are other communities that are looking at that exact same issue, and when we talk with them, mobility is a huge piece of that, and, and of course, Littleton's way ahead of the curve with its omnibus and shopping cart. We're actually a model for others, and they hear what we're doing, and they like it, and they talk about it. Even this weekend, that conversation was had with other mayors. But we also have, you know, when, when a store closed at Woodlawn, and the issue of whether that post office is going to keep going, is a huge impact on people that are a walking distance away, who, this is their, this is why they're in Littleton. And those, so there's so many interconnected things, whether it's the mobility, the availability of a grocery store or the post office, the ability to get to the doctor's office and do what we do, and, and I don't think we've ever connected those in terms of what should be next. So when we talk about a, you know, it, it sounds like a threat perhaps to somebody who's listening, say, oh, my God, they're going to, you know, something, something with the, the shopping centers that have reached their economic lifespan, but what we're really talking about is renewing the opportunity for people to not have the post office closed, not, not have a grocery store, be able to, you know, we're trying to find a way to boost that up, so.
And make better, better use. I mean, those, there can be housing and a post office and a Starbucks all in the same area.
That's, that's my suggestion, that we don't, we make sure as we're talking about this, we realize the interconnections, because I know when somebody comes looking for a home, they describe to you the perfect environment, and there may be a walking distance issue or, or whatever. We got to make sure we include that in, in this because if we, you know, otherwise, we don't catch the whole, the whole concept.
Well, and I think the walkability is huge, and, and that's where you have opportunities for mixed use, because that becomes walkable for the community, for that community. So I think that, you know, and we even have walk scores now, you know, in our MLS. We have the walk score, and, and your younger people look at that. They want to know the walk score. I just sold the house next door to me, and I live over off of Mineral in Santa Fe. Young couple, no children yet, and they wanted because of light rail. So I think we have an asset that is incredible to have light rail right in our backyard. And have we done much with any kind of TOD development? Not to my knowledge. So I mean, I think we, and we don't want to miss that opportunity. I think if we wait too much longer, we're going to be really behind the, the eight-ball guys. I mean, I think we have an asset there that is incredible. And when I see at 6:30 in the morning, just a whole stream of people with their briefcases walking to light rail, you know that the, number one, the values of properties is going to remain, and we were very fortunate in Littleton that we didn't see a huge dip in values. And I think part of it was because of our, our community. We have the downtown, we're one of the few that has a downtown street, a main street, and so I think we have so many amenities and assets that we can build on, but I think we definitely need this, a study. I think this is so important to really get a handle on where we want to go, what we want to do, and what we want to look like, and what we want to provide for our citizens here in Littleton, and for those future citizens that will be coming.
Hey, just a, a question. Maureen mentioned the, you know, the car imbalance. A lot of your constituents don't necessarily have cars. Have you noticed a trend in the market to try to locate on transportation corridors? Because so much of Littleton was built during the heart of the automobile era when Detroit was healthy and everybody was just delighted to be able to get in their car and drive a while every day. And now we're getting, it seems like we're getting away from that, and once again, this is a study that we all have opinions on, but what really are the facts? Do you see people wanting to locate along the bus routes? Obviously, the light rail has an impact. Our housing stock developed by and large before light rail came. What's that going to do to us? What's your take on that?
I think a lot of the younger people would love to not have to have their cars, and I think that's why you see such a migration to the Highlands and to downtown area. I can only say that in my neighborhood, and Carolyn can probably vouch for this, that basically, a lot of people have moved there because of light rail, because they can walk to the light rail. Now, that doesn't mean they don't have a car because they, they, they're transporting kids to and from school and that type thing, but I think anything that they can do to access that, that public transportation, and I, I liked what you said about the connectivity that we, we've not really done that. Have we made it easy even to walk across Littleton Boulevard or to get across Broadway? I mean, those are the kinds of things that we have to look at, and, and this, a plan like this is more than just housing to me. It is bicycle routes. It is, is, it's, do, how do you, how do you cross a street? ADA gets into this. I mean, there's just so many things that can come out of this, that can be such a dynamic, what am I want to say? It can be such a dynamic, what am I want to say? Something that we need to do. And I think it will mean so much if we can really just gear into this and look at a higher level, and all of us with open minds be willing to open up and have a good dialogue.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for any of you up there, really. Some things I would like, Andy, maybe you guys could help us out with eventually. But Kay, just because you're in the business and you know a lot more about real estate than I do. But in the business, I mean, I see a lot of new developments. There's thousands of units being built east of us. Parker, Denver, Aurora, Commerce City, Brighton, Thornton, thousands of units. And I don't look at them as walkable. I mean, they're all huge houses, for one. Not all, but many of them are huge. And there are townhomes being built out there. But I don't see them as, and they're certainly not close to light rail.
No.
So, so I guess the question I have there is, what is attracting those families to those homes out there? It's not because they're inexpensive, because they're not.
No. You know, I, I, new. I'm just saying.
Well, that would be it.
They want a new house.
Because if, it isn't because there's businesses like Martin Marietta, which is what Littleton, you were talking about, Gates, and Martin Marietta was what this place is all about. And there are no Martin Mariettas or other one business out there.
No.
So other than new, is that all they care about is new?
Well, I think it's, it's new. A lot of it is just because they want a new house.
And they're beautiful.
And, and I think a lot of it is, I mean, I see on that corridor, on that E470 corridor over there, when I show over there, most of those people are, they work at the, a lot of them are airport, they work at the airport. So I think a lot of people locate depending on where their job is. And so I think on that corridor, you're seeing a lot of that is because of, they work at the airport, that, and so I think you'll see a lot of that. I think Littleton is unique in the fact that we're landlocked, we're kind of this little jewel sitting here. Really, the next Wash Park, kind of wanting to, they can't afford Wash Park, but they can afford, they, they can still come to Littleton. It's a little bit less than Wash Park. I don't know how long that's going to last. I mean, I look at what's happened at the Highlands, and I'm, I'm amazed, totally amazed. I don't think we ever would want Littleton to be a Highlands, for sure. They don't really have the main street. But I think that it could be a Highlands if we don't plan.
But I go to the Highlands sort of often, because my.
Yeah.
My daughter lives there with her husband, so my survey of one tells me that, you know, they, they both have cars and there are lots of walkable little places to go to lunch.
Right, boutique.
Of which you nearly need to take out a loan just to go to lunch.
Right.
But, but, and, but that's maybe just a, a unique type thing. Wash Park is, is no Highlands, but Wash Park is certainly nice. Littleton, maybe parts of it could almost be that.
But Highlands is a good example of what, if you don't really have a set plan and a community and what you want to have happen there, it can just kind of, because the other thing you're trying to do here is be a little bit defensive about the private.
Right.
Developer. Because they have ideas what they want to do with Littleton. Is that in line with what the city wants to do?
Right.
And then on the transportation, I would just say that I was at a urban land institute, and it was interesting. They showed the light rail station from downtown Washington to the suburbs, and it, from 30,000 feet or whatever. And it was amazing, because everywhere there was light rail, it was boom. And then we'd go back to the light rail station. And I, and I think you're right. That is an asset within the city of Littleton that we need to understand and, and take advantage of.
Yeah, a couple, to finish my, my final comments on this, one of the things I would like maybe the, the housing authority could do, and not tonight, but just let us know what kind of, you know, what do you guys have planned for your development, your growths, building, whether it's rehab or, or new construction? The other thing that maybe you could work in with Michael Penny, the city manager too, is, is what kind of workplaces are attracting residents to Littleton? And, and what can maybe we can do more to help those businesses, types of businesses come to Littleton? Because if there's places to work, people will surely work closer. Again, and if you could help me to understand a little bit about what type of growth is going on outside of the community. I don't mean like Inglewood or something like that. I mean, again, like the, the Brightons, the Parkers. Parker's huge now. I'm so amazed, but it's no longer a little town. But if you could, help me to understand what is, what are, what kind of developments are going out there? And maybe what, the mentality of why people are going there. They don't all work at DIA, I know that.
No.
So, but you know, there's certainly, that, that would be the one employer base area. And I, I guess those are some things, maybe as you guys go forward, you can, can get that information, bring it to us sometime.
And, and you know, one of the other pieces of that is if, if you go on a, a walking tour, a car tour of Littleton right now, you'll find five or six houses and then a, somebody who's really invested in a redo. And then, you know, you'll go a little ways and you'll see suddenly, a whole street begins to change. You know, things are happening, really good things are happening out in the neighborhoods. But I'm not sure I know why. I mean, I think I know. I think somebody had some money in their pocket and decided that that was their dream home, they wanted to stay there, but I don't really know that. I don't know if they're doing it for investment, I don't, I don't know. And I don't know how, from the banking point of view, what the, what the financial piece of that is, and what kind of risk is being taken. And if there's some way that as a city, we can facilitate whatever is the best, in the best interest of that kind of interest that somebody has in Littleton. I don't know whether it's making it easier for them to expand their home. I don't know whether it's finding grants for windows, you know, that, that is available through Rappel County, if it's a financing issue, that maybe somehow it could be influenced to, to have more of that. But those are, those are great, great things that are happening, and you find it all around town, and it's, it's a great thing. And it keeps, it keeps the neighborhood strong. And we probably want to find a way to know what that's all about. Don't you?
I guess I'm perplexed on what problem we're trying to solve here. If we've got 20,000 houses, dwelling units, and only 25 are available, I'd say we don't have a very high vacancy rate. If we have high value in the housing, what are we trying to fix?
Do we have anything for the new people that want to move here? Where are they going, where are they going to live?
Well, then the question that really ought to be asked is, we ought to poll the population, see if they want to increase the density, that they want to increase the population in the city of Littleton. I mean, if we have $50,000 that's burning a hole in our pocket, and we're trying to go and pay somebody to find problems for us, then what we come back with is things like urban renewal that decided that two of the housing authorities' properties were some slum and blight. I mean, I don't know what we're trying to fix. If, if we don't have a vacancy rate, if people want to come here, if the people are happy with the way the city is, if the housing is retaining its value, then what's our problem? I mean, I've heard talk about transportation issues and underperforming shopping centers and things like this. If we pick something that we can narrow in on, that we think that we have a problem with, that might make sense. But we've talked about everything under the sun. And for $50,000. It, it's almost like we've got money, please come find a problem for us, that we can go do something with. What are you going to tell the consultants when you hire them? Who are you going to hire at this point?
Doug, I think if you don't have a plan, and I don't see that the city, and this is just, and I'm not on council, but I think if you don't have a plan, and for the future, for those, what's going to happen? So we react when a developer brings something for a, a shopping center, let's say. And then everybody gets up in arms about, it's not what we wanted. Well, if we had some kind of a plan and policies in place, that we could say, okay, developer, this is our vision. To me, that is, it's not saying that we have a real problem. That's not what I'm saying, anyway. I'm saying that we need to plan, and we need to really hone in on this and determine what we want this city to look like in 20 years.
Well, that's, and I'm not arguing against that, but that would be a comprehensive plan function that ought to be done through the Planning Commission, that really doesn't involve South Metro Housing Options.
Well, I think it, to me, then I'm, I'm, we're talking about two different things. Because I'm talking about a plan where our community comes in. And I'm talking about, maybe we have charrettes. Maybe we do a placemaking over on Littleton Boulevard, to show what could that look like? How exciting that might be to do a placemaking one weekend? And let the community get involved, versus it being a top-down, let's, let's really get out and have focus groups and do some kind of planning, and, and let our community get involved. To me, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about a comprehensive plan. I'm talking about just getting the community involved to make, and it may mean some zoning changes. It may mean some policy changes. I mean, other communities are doing this all over the nation. And, I mean, I have, this just came in. And this is Traverse City, Michigan. And I can give you many, many of these. I will be going to a Smart Growth Conference in Portland, and I can tell you that this is exactly what every community is doing. And I think we need to be proactive and, and spend the 50,000, and let's really get a plan going here, and get some input from our community. Do focus groups, and have someone do it that is neutral. I think that's very important.
Bill, you had a response.
I, I think Kay's right on this, and it, it seems like we are talking about that. We have two options. We can either plan for the future and have it look the way we want it, or not do anything, and have it dictated to us by happenstance. And that's, then we look like Houston, which is probably the worst-planned city in the country. It's sprawl, there's no zoning, there's a, there's a mill next to a very nice single-family home, next to a school, next to a church, next to a strip joint, and, and you name it. And by anticipating over the long run, if we, our problem is that things happen that we may not like, if we don't have a say in it. The best things that have ever happened in this country happened because people sat around a table and figured out how to make it look like they wanted to make it look. You know, if we can send a man to the moon, we can figure out what our community should look like. And I think, you know, we can let it just happen and, and not do anything, and not spend the $50,000, and, and wonderful. But then what are we going to miss out in, on, in the long run, in terms of increased viability of the community and an improved school system? Because we have people who are more willing to participate in it, and, and the viability of the housing stock, and the representation of all points in the bell curve in our housing stock. We need to answer those questions so that people can get around better, and we don't have areas of the city that get blighted, because we haven't properly planned for it in the long run.
Debbie.
I, I'd like to see is, put a task force together, maybe a couple of council members working with Kay and, and South Metro Options, to, to help define what a study could look like, and then come back to council and report and see if we want to go forward. But I, I'd be very willing to work with you people, and I, you know, because most of your housing stock is, is all your housing stock based on need?
No.
What, what do you deal with that isn't?
We have a tax credit property, 69 units, that's for middle income.
Okay.
The rents are set by CHAPA.
And.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And.
Tax credit property, 69 units on Power Circle that we just rehabbed. We have Libby Borts. I mean, we don't even talk about the Libby Borts Assisted Living Center, but that's one that we have. And Geneva Village, which really belongs to the city, but we manage that for the city.
Okay. And then, so you've got a fairly diverse cross-section.
Yes.
And, so Geneva's not based on, that's.
Geneva, the only qualification is you have to be 55 or older.
Well, heck, we could all move in together. Let's, but.
Not with you.
I'm insulted. So, so would that work? Would some kind of a task force work if council would be.
That would be great, because I think we want to do the study in a way that's meaningful, not only for council, but for the community.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I mean, this is not a housing authority study. We just are the kind of the housing experts supposedly in Littleton. And we're just facilitating this. Obviously, we think that there's a piece of affordable housing in any study that you would do, but we're just facilitating it.
And it may be that that group gets together, and like Doug said, maybe we decide there isn't a problem. I, I would like to see is, define and talk out a little more if there, you know, if we, we do think it'd be a good idea to plan for the future, or if we just want to let it happen.
I, I was also going to say, Bruce, if I just might add this, that some of the consultants will do these studies in phases. And maybe you do phase one, you get this information, you decide, we don't really need to go any further. Maybe you go to phase two, and then you decide what you need to do. So you don't need to spend all of the 50,000 all at once, you can do it in phases. And a lot of the consultants will do it that way.
Great.
Debbie, you had something?
Yeah, just a couple comments. I, I think that the, I, I think it's definitely not, we're not in search of a problem. We are faced with, make a lot of decisions as it relates to housing and to what the city, you know, what the city looks like. Some of the things that, Bill, you mentioned the three-legged stool. And I think that the transportation overlay of this is really important, because a lot of what Kay said. And that was what I was saying earlier, about the way people are living, and the demographics and their sociographics, and what are the trends? The trends are more walkability. When I was growing up, walkability wasn't important, because there wasn't any traffic, and, and you could get places quickly. And so those things have changed. We constantly hear complaints about the traffic. And it is, it is, it takes a lot longer to go from point A to point B, just in town, than it used to. That affects quality of life. That affects decisions about where you work, where you play, where you shop, where you live. And so I think if we're going to do a study, it may behoove us to actually do something that expands beyond just a housing type of study, but that we add components to that level of transportation. And the other thing I would, I would encourage us to think about on this, is to add this kind of an employer retail, and then they're two different things. But the retail market, which is important to us, clearly, because that's where our, we generate our revenues, they base so many of their decisions on where they're going to locate and what type of store they're going to build, on the housing and the transportation in those particular areas. There's a reason why Littleton does not have a Trader Joe's. There's a reason why they have popped up all around us, and we will not have one. And it has to do with those issues. And those are things that we, I think, looking at those, will help us become more educated on that, and help to make better decisions on, you know, when, when we're asked to make those decisions. So I would almost say that the study could be more robust, and that we may be, get a higher level of value from it by including some other components.
Well, I think the employer base is huge.
Microphone.
The employer base, I think, is huge, Debbie. And I think that that definitely should be a part of it, because they have requirements. And if we're going to have employers come here, whether big, small, whatever, we need to find out what they want, and that needs to be included, because then that, that helps us determine, they'll tell us what their workforce, they anticipate their workforce will be, the age they anticipate, and the housing they anticipate. And they want them to live closer to work. They don't want them to live in North Glen, or out, you know, in Bennett, and work here, because they know that, you know, there's downtime. It snows, and they don't get here on time. So I mean, I think all of that is very important.
Well, as a quick example of that, South Park, which is one of our highest employer, employer-based areas, and South Park is huge. It stretches from, most people don't realize, it really does stretch from Santa Fe all the way to Broadway. And it is growing. There are businesses that are popping up in there right now. I think there are four under construction. are businesses that are popping up in there right now. I think there are four under construction. And they're big. And there are huge businesses in there that have been there for a while, you know, Quest to name one, but a lot of others that people may not even be aware of. And the largest available housing for them is Highlands Ranch.
So that all gets packed in.
So, I'm, I'm a little confused about how we're thinking about going, looking at all of this. I've been on council eight years. Right after, I think, I first got on, there were some comprehensive plan things that council looked at or didn't implement or whatever. And it seems to me we're revisiting some things that maybe we already have some guidance on. But if we don't, it seems to me, since we're talking planning, and I hate to agree with Doug, but this seems to me a planning, planning board issue.
We'll do.
But we've had several studies that were really, really good, and we haven't really followed up on a lot of these things. Kent was, was on, on the planning board, I think, when I was first elected. There were some-
I was the chair.
Yeah. So there were some really good things, you know, that, that came out of that. So maybe we just need to look back and, and see, geez, you know, is some of what was already studied still applicable? And you don't necessarily need to drill down too far to see if it's still applicable. But otherwise, I, I like the idea of some group, somebody, looking at the shopping centers to indeed see whether or not other uses need to be combined with those, as in some housing connected with existing shopping centers. Now, maybe that means you tear down the whole thing and start from scratch to have the right kind of layout and combination and so forth. But we have three that immediately come to my mind that perhaps are, have, have great potential. I'll put it that way. So I'm, I'm not, I think maybe, so you said, what do we want to study a little bit more? Maybe we need to have a little more discussion on this to collect, to size up what we, what we have available from previous studies that might still be current, what we want to, want to then have someone look at a little bit more. Not sure.
I'm in agreement with what Peggy is saying, that it's back to, we don't know what we don't know. And, and, you know, I, I came on council, you know, four, four years ago plus. We have a new member, you know, who has less, less than a year on. We have a recession that occurred in 2008 and might have, might have changed some of the assumptions of those studies prior to 2000. I mean, you know, it's, it's a world of change. I think it's a good idea to look at those, bring everyone today up to, up to knowledge of, of what we have to some point, and I think that's part of what we're talking about, and then see where the gaps are and what we're not, what we don't have. That is, that is a real good, valid part of what we need to know and might be included. And again, the idea tonight is not to pin down exactly what we're going to do, but I, I wanted to raise the questions. And, you know, just, one of the, one of the things that's happened recently is, and was alluded to, is something is being built on zoning that is more than 20 years old. Woulda, shoulda, coulda, over the last 20 years, that been looked at for possibly other zoning. I don't know. I don't know whether that's legal. I don't know if it's appropriate. I don't know. But, but, but it wasn't done. I don't know what the reasons were. I would hate for 20 years in the future now for them to look back to this council and say, woulda, shoulda, coulda. And so all I'm trying to do, again, and it's different for council, we haven't done it for a while, is to just try to have an overall, an overall look of our circumstance and where it is. And I think we need to have somebody to guide us to do that. I think we have to have some fact gathering. I don't know who the committee's going to be that's going to be ultimately working on that. I would like to see some citizens also. I mean, you know, we've talked about that. There's some real expertise around town, perhaps, you know, and they don't maybe require any money to, they might be citizen volunteer, volunteers. But we might have to have a focus group, and you need to pay people for that. You might have to have some kind of polling or fact gathering, and we might need to pay people for that. And to Joe's point of view, a little bit of shopping and looking, we might be able to see something that phases it. And the first phase might help you understand do something, do nothing, you know, whatever, before you commit to maybe the whole hog, you know, you get a taste of it. And I think these are all things we can do. And I, I'm just opening the idea for council, hey, these are all within our capabilities. You know, we either, either we get a hold of change or change gets a hold of us. And I'd like to see it be some leadership on council's part and other city leaders. And I'm about ready to wrap it up, so that's-
And Bruce, to your point, and I think Peggy, you bring up a good point about all the, the studies we have on the shelf, and maybe, maybe we need to have either an independent or as a part of this, kind of an inventory of those studies because we, I know we totally redid the comprehensive plan a few years ago and it got tossed out. You know, was that appropriate or was it not? You know, do we need to, to interact other things? But some of the, the, the piece about this particular question that we're dealing with tonight, there's been a lot of change just since '08. Because we went into an economic trough, the, the real growth figures around the country on all kinds of economic data, the GDPs and such, that are really the closest correlation we have to, to community growth have been very strong. And there have been some societal changes that have happened in terms of emergence of the millennials, new lifestyles, urge to be near-transportation corridors, it's such, that are fundamental sociographic changes that we need to figure out. And they, remember, they've thrown out demographics. It's now it's psychographic. So somebody who is 85 years old may think like a 26-year-old, and that's, that's the whole- Thank you. -issue, and vice versa. So, you know, we, we, those different kind of changes in thinking make it important for us to address our future in housing before we spend an inordinate amount of time taking, you know, a study that was done, I think our last plan update was in, just at the end of the Lincoln administration. It was a long time ago. I don't know when it was, but it was a long time ago before all the parts were there. And there are other things that we need to do in terms of, you know, does the, should the design guidelines in the, in the key cultural parts of our city be incorporated into ordinances, into zoning ordinances, so that we keep our culture? What's that look like? But it's a different question than addressing the housing. So I, I really would like to see us push forward with a study structure.
Well, I, I mean, I'm fine with going and digging up on the shelves and seeing what's there, but I've been on council for eight years, and the only one that I remember having any validity at all was basically housing inventory in the community. And that was done prior to this, to the 2010 census. There's been, you know, we're working on studies right now for our TODs that we've never done before. We've got, we've got a study going on for the streets. The studies we're doing now are because we, none of the information we ever gathered before are appropriate or applicable to the decisions we need to be making. So I'm fine looking at what's there and maybe bringing back a inventory list and deciding, you know, what should go forward. But I don't think I'd spend a whole bunch of time or assume that there's a whole lot of value there. I think that these trends are changing so fast. Who would have thought that people would, you'd see the market shift to where people are actually preferring to rent as opposed to home own? I mean, these are the things that are happening. The millennials are changing things. The baby boomers segueing into another level of their life. It's, it's all stuff that's, that's dynamic and changing. So like I said, I'm, see what we got, but I don't hold out a lot of hope.
Is there sentiment?
Is there?
Yeah. Is there sentiment to go?
Yeah. So, again, the goal was not to answer any questions but to raise the issues. You know, some of my best thoughts are at 3:00 in the morning the next day kind of thing. And I would expect that we'd all have some thoughts. We're going to, we'll schedule a meeting again to talk about this a little bit more, figure out exactly what it is, what are the questions that we need to get answered? What are the ones that we're comfortable with? You know, I mean, this is, this is a work in progress. It's not a, a done deal at the end of this meeting. And I'm going to end the conversation now, take a five-minute break.
What do you want us to do?
Hold, hold fast right now because I think we're going to be, we're going to be meeting as a council. In the meantime, if, if any one of us has some ideas, you know, reduce them to writing maybe so that we can circulate them around, talk to the city manager, and maybe he can consolidate the questions. And we can, he'll be communicating back and forth with Flo. And Andy is a citizen volunteer on the board. And Phil?
Yeah, I, just to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, Bruce, is, is that Joe, Andy, Michael can kind of bring together what we've talked about tonight, put some things on paper, what may or may not look as studyable or actionable from that perspective, and begin to put those questions together. And then we can reconvene and take a look at it.
That's right. So we're not reaching any conclusions tonight at all on it. We're just really throwing it out to the winds to be able to gather information.
Good luck.
Okay, five minutes. Council, could you take your seats, please?
I don't think they're on.
Are they on?
Oh, yours is. Jerry?
Council, take your seats, please. Folks, we want to start the next, could we take the conversations outside?
All right, come to order, come to order.
All right, come to order, come to order. You need a hammer.
Phil.
All right.
All right. So I think the mayor wanted to end by nine o'clock, so I'm going to do my best to get aside here by then. The mayor asked--
Is it on?
It's on, should be on. Pull up closer. Talking to it.
There you go.
Is that better? So the mayor asked me to talk about the Enser property, I think on the heels of the last regular council meeting. And since then, Councilmember Brinkman had a meeting, I guess you would say, last Thursday, which I think she was intending to talk to an HOA, and it turned into a larger group. So she had asked me to attend that meeting and speak to very much a lot of the same data that I was going to give you this evening. So apologize, not intending you to read the maps or even look at them evenly here, but I'm just going to kind of talk about where they came from in the 80s, as we move through time, where we are today, and what the facts are, from what I'm aware of, related to potential development on the site. So backing up a little bit, talk a little bit about use by right and rezoning, which I know the council is cognizant of. So these plans, which were approved as part of an annexation for, which brought in Mineral Avenue, were signed and negotiated by Charlie Emlee, who was the mayor at the time, president of the council back then. And basically, it's 100, at the time, it was 129 acres. I don't know if Doug's can be able to zoom in on this. And what we have here is Ken Carl, which is Mineral Avenue now. And on the north side, there were two parcels which have been turned into the 711 and the RTD, part of the RTD property in there, which leaves us about 122 acres on that parcel, on the property. There are nine parcels in there. And this sheet here, 24 by 36 and about a six font, is the wonderful list of uses that were negotiated at that time. I'm not going to read a lot of them, but they range from every type of retail that you can think of, to extraction of commercial mineral deposits, home repair centers, churches, civic uses, laboratories, health clubs, just a wide variety of stuff, which probably made a lot of sense in 1984, 1985 timeframe. I think if we look at this development, and I'll get into it a little bit shortly, if we were all sitting around that table to your previous conversation, and we were looking into the future and said, what do we want it to look like? This is clearly what the community at that time, through the elected body, said, this is what we want to see happen. And if you think back to that time, as the mayor has pointed out several times, C-470 didn't exist, county line was Tulane, Highlands Ranch was in its infancy stage. So it was a very different world than what we're living with right now. The heights on these parcels range from Partial F, which is maximum height of about 150 feet, not approximately, but up to 150 feet. Majority of these parcels are 70 feet, with some residential at 35 feet. What we have in here, and again, I don't expect people to really be able to see this, but these PDCs are all planned development commercial properties. Virtually all of them allow for residential on it. So wide variety of options for a developer to come in and evaluate what they would like to do. The only one that's really focused on the residential was the southwest corner of this property, and then a northwest parcel precluded residential for whatever reason. And so again, lots of different uses, different setback requirements, height requirements. This map over here was a concept drawing that was done at the time to, I think, illustrate what could be built on here. And depending upon who you talk to, it was either intended to be kind of a shopping mecca, again, from the reasons I talked about, Park Meadows didn't exist, that we were the southern terminus for a lot, or it was kind of a DTC type concept with a lot of office buildings, and again, a lot of height in there for office retail, potentially residential in there. So I think it was a very well-intentioned plan at the time, but now here we are 30 years later. And so we're looking at this plan, and this is a use by right. This is an allowed use. If you can figure out how to interpret all of this, and come in and talk to our planning director, and our planning staff has that same interpretation, along with our land use code, all the components tying together, more power to you. So an example of the evolution of time, which is the only document we have found, was from 2007. And again, I'm not expecting people to see this, but you have, this would be north here, get the map here right. And it's got a, this is truly an auto-oriented focus. 2007 is when this conversation happened. And you've got major boxes, you've got 102,000 square foot box, you've got a 90 square foot box, you've got all auto-oriented with a ton of parking in here, and just box after box after box after box. So an example of a developer coming in and coming up with a concept idea, probably tried to sell it at the time, where would this go, et cetera, and then they go by the wayside. And the reason I bring that up is because what happens, and what has happened during my tenure, is I've probably had four to five to six developers come in and talk to us about the potential of the development of this site. The facts are right now that it is still owned by the Enser's, and I'm going to drill into it. And the Enser's have, to the extent that they will talk, or the extent that developers talk to us about their conversations, are not interested or willing to go through a rezone process. So essentially, they tell the buyer, if you can build this under these rules, then we'll sell it to you, but other than that, we're not going to allow you to go through some kind of rezone process. Now, I can't say that factually, but I can tell you that that's been, what's been told to us, and it appears to be accurate, given the lack of rezones that have come through here. So I want to press pause on this for a second and just briefly talk, and I'll do my best to make it brief, because there's a lot of speculation and thought about there. And so I want people to think just fairly high level. You guys just had a really great, high-level conversation. And this property allegedly is on the market for $25 million. That's what they were asking. We've been told by some of the folks coming in and evaluating this, that the public infrastructure, kind of based on, you know, these types of plans, is somewhere between 17 and 20 million. You've got roads, you've got, the majority of this is in the floodplain, et cetera, et cetera. And so if you use 20 million just for easy numbers, you've got about a $45 million investment before you can come out of the ground vertically on something. So an investor and developer come in. Developer has, you know, multiple investors behind them who want, you know, some of them might have patient money, some of them probably want 10% return in three years, whatever it is. So you've got to figure out how to get something in the ground and then come out of the ground fairly quickly. A developer is probably not going to sit around a table like this with their land use attorney and their land use staff and their architects and civils and all that, read this, pull out our land use code, come up with all this and say, wow, that's crystal clear. Clearly, we can build exactly what we want on this site. Sure, Mr. and Mrs. Property Owner, we'd give you $25 million, and we'll go build it. What they're going to do in reality, and this is what they do even on smaller fourplexes, et cetera, et cetera, is they sit down, they get a general idea of what they want to do, then they call up our city staff and they say, we need to talk to you about what your interpretation is, what your read on a lot of this stuff, because this is clearly not black and white. I mean, I know you can tell just from the text that it's not black and white. And so that developer is going to go in and they're going to put down some level of money, earnest money, they might put a little bit of hard money down, and they're going to say, we will close on the property when we have confirmation of our entitlements, whether that's a rezone or confirmation from the city saying that you can build whatever this is, before they actually acquire that piece of property. So that has not happened in this case. We have not heard from the developer. I did meet with the Enser's after Councilman Brinkman's meeting and talked to them about some of the conversation that we had had. They confirmed that it is under contract, and it is under contract with a company called Endeavor. I will tell you that they were very surprised when I said, we haven't talked to them in over a year. So they would not share what those conditions of the contract were. The only thing they were willing to convey to me was, it was under contract and who it was under contract with. So we anticipate that these folks, Endeavor, may come in and contact our city staff and start a conversation about what development on this site looks like. They may not, who knows? But that has not happened to date. So there is no pending Walmart, there is no pending development, there are no secret meetings, there is nothing at this point. If we did, we would have a conversation with them, we would update the city council on it. One of the other concerns that is out there, allegations, whatever term you want to use, is that Walmart has contacted us directly, there's, you know, whatever conversations around that that are out there. Absolutely false, once again. And from a common sense standpoint, Walmart is not going to be a name on this parcel right here. Walmart is not going to call us up and negotiate anything. A developer is going to develop 120 acres. So I want to talk, I want to just take a second for people to think about the magnitude of what this 120 acres is. Littleton Village, which you guys talked about a little while ago, is 77 acres. It has a quarter million square feet of retail on it, and it's got, it's zoned for, I think, 900 units, and we've got about 450 units going on it. So you can more than double that on this parcel. Jocelyn took a quick look at what just the rough numbers were.
Did you say Littleton Village is 400?
450 units.
It's approved for 900.
Correct, but there's 450 permitted right now on it. But yes, Jerry, you're exactly right. 900 units on 50 to 60 acres, because you've got that quarter million retail on their office, I should say, commercial, actually. So Jocelyn just took a quick look at this, and not saying that that could be built, but what in potential, given this complexity, you could get upwards of 1.6 million square feet of commercial property. To put that in perspective, Park Meadows is 1.5 million. Well, you got to park it and all that. So reality probably is it's not there, but I just want people thinking about that magnitude. And you could put an additional 1,000 units on there. So Walmart is a small component of that, and in that big box format. And I will take ownership for unleashing the flames of Walmart and Sam's Club as a large format box. But I want to point out that this drawing from 2007 is an example of where we've already moved from these smaller boxes to whoever this was that did this drawing, I have no idea, don't really care, just use it as an illustrative purpose, example to show, these are big boxes that they have put out here. And I've talked to many of you about this, but when I look around, and I try to give you guys real-life examples of what we're dealing with, I look around what's been built here, you're not going to get a target in this community. We have three targets, stones thrown from us. We have a Costco, a stone's thrown from us. I mean, you can pick your box poison, if you will, and what's left, what's not in this area, who likes to have more than less? Walmart. So I use it as a real-life example for you. It's not that it's coming, there are no maps that say Sam's Club and Walmart. Another fact I want to point out, these folks do not tell us who their tenants are. We have an issue over at Littleton Village right now, where there is a base tenant, 85,000 square feet. They're negotiating with staff about landscaping or parking or whatever it is, and it's all in service of trying to meet this tenant's personal needs. They won't tell us who the tenant is, they have no obligation to. Councilman Brinkman used Tattered Cover as an example at Aspen Grove, that they kept that confidential until the very end. Aspen Grove was negotiating against GGP for LL Bean when they came in, and they won't tell us what those names are. So developers don't come in and say, hey, we want to bring you this. They come in and say, we want to talk about this land use development project that's out there. So a couple other pieces I want to hit on, we've got about six minutes. It was brought up at the last meeting that Jim Reese, who's the executive director for Lyft, had contacted Endeavor, and there was kind of, I think, some thought or concern that there was additional conversations, negotiations going on the city wasn't aware of. Was it happening, wasn't happening? So the other contact I made since last meeting and Councilman Brinkman's meeting was to contact Jim Reese and ask what he indeed had done. So he did reach out to Endeavor and asked a question of, a simple question, basically one-sentence question of, are you planning on moving forward in 2016? And if so, are you interested in TIF? Something along those lines. And he said he got a one-sentence response that said, we're hoping to move forward with, begin the land use process, and certainly we'd be interested in TIF. So there have been no other conversations occurring beyond that. He also made that same outreach, he told me, to Columbine Square. His statement to me on the phone was that he was doing that for budget purposes, for looking at what the workload was going to be in 2016, not that he was trying to circumvent the city's land use process. And to further that component, our planning director met with the Lyft director to talk about that process and ensure, and I think most of council is aware, when we ran into the Columbine Square, I don't remember the time right now, but it was either last year or late 2014, they had started down the financial process, not the land use process. And at that time, we had talked to Lyft and said, we always start with the land use process and ensure that the land use component is first, then it gets through that, and then if and when the council says, hypothetically, yes on a rezone, then it can move into the direction of having the conversation around financing. So just want to clarify, again, no conversation with anyone in this, we have not received anything, and if we do, the first person who that goes to is our planning director. And if and when that occurs, we will notify the council and we can start whatever conversation that's appropriate in that. Lastly, in my now, under four minutes that I have, I want to hit a couple components of Lyft and urban renewal. So first of all, and I apologize, because I'm probably saying things you already know, but Lyft has zero control over land use. Lyft and urban renewal is a financing mechanism specifically intended, depending upon your view of the world, shouldn't say specifically, but an option, is the gap financing. So if council was interested, the community was interested in seeing this developed, and a developer comes in and says, I can't make it work based upon X, Y, and Z, it's the council and the community's decision whether or not they want to come to the aid of the developer, the landowner, the builder, whatever it might be, to help that come out of the ground and something happen and change it from what it is to what it could be. It is not a right, I think that is a belief that is out there. It is a decision by the city council, and in this case, the urban renewal authority, Lyft, on whether or not a developer gets that financing. Does it have to come back to the city council? The answer, in my opinion, is going to be yes, and I'll explain why. So the council signed IGA's for the property tax increment for LPS and South Suburban, which basically outlined the negotiation components for the use of that property tax. The county, we are still in negotiations of what that looks like. When you think about this, and then our property tax clearly is out there, the bulk of what this is and the bulk of the investment and the change that we're going to get on something potentially at this site, and certainly if you want to run down the high retail, is going to be in the sales tax. Well, what the council did was they authorized the use of sales tax increment in the adoption of the plan, so we put that money in a special account. But it will take an intergovernmental agreement from this council to Lyft to transfer those funds from point A to point B. So the answer to me is yes, because the bulk of the money, you guys all know, we live on sales tax, so the bulk of what's going to come out of this most likely is going to be a retail component of which will need to come to council. Lyft will have no authority to use that money without an approval of this council for the IGA. And the other piece of this, kind of overlaying the political reality, is your Lyft board, which is appointed by you, is not going to take any action that is not in service of what this council's goals and objectives are. They appointed, you appointed them, they came and applied, they're interested in economic development, these are not private people who benefit from this, they want to help this community become vibrant. Everything you guys were talking about related to housing is the same in the economic development world. And for those of you who know Justin Hay, many of you around the table interviewed Justin Hay, I mean, the man wants to do an incredible job for you, and he is committed to, you know, doing the best, and he's not going to operate outside of the purview or desire of the city council. And so they're not an arm's length, they're not a separate, you know, they're legally a separate entity, but they're not going to operate like a developer or like a banker or whatever piece you want to think about. The concept of the arm's length ties back to the fact that this body, years ago, when they created it, said, we want it-- ago, when they created it, said, we want it to be a separate entity. The state allows you to be the urban renewal board, if you so chose, and your city attorney can also be your urban renewal attorney, if you were one in the same, or if you had chose to have your city attorney act as the urban renewals attorney. So they're really us. They're, that fear that it's going to be something separate, I think, is an unfounded fear. And so the reality of where we are right now is, we have an opportunity to look at this parcel, I haven't heard anybody say 1984 is what we want in 2016. So, the question then becomes, to your earlier conversation, and I think it was council member Hopping that, we talked about this, what is the vision? What would we like to see here? Because if a developer comes in and sits down with our planning director, sits down with me, and lays out a plan, and there's a bunch of boxes on it, and clearly it's an auto-oriented destination, and I say, well, I'm pretty sure that the council and the community isn't going to be excited about that, their very next question is going to be, well, what do you want? So that goes to council member Hopping's question, because I'm not sure we can answer that question of what do we want to see right here. I personally, as your city manager, do not think this is the type of project that we want to see developed in 2016. This is not looking to the future, this is 30 years in the past. Again, a great plan for 30 years ago, got no qualms about it, and then don't think our predecessors did anything wrong, I think they did exactly what the type of thing that we would do, given this, if we were sitting down and negotiating with a landowner on this. And I think many of you have high regard for Charlie Emily, this was not a, you know, not a, just a whim, this was a well-thought-out project for them. So we have an opportunity, I think, and, and this may raise some ire with some folks in the room, but an example of the positive use of urban renewal, or TIF, or sales tax shareback, is when that developer comes in here and says, I'm $45 million before I can go vertical, and you don't like what's on it, and it's a use by right, let's enter into a public-private partnership and a conversation about, all right, let's try to buy down that density, let's try to buy down that big box.
You're rocking and squeaking at the same time. Thank you.
We've got some WD-40, we'll take, we'll take care of that before next Tuesday. Hey, hey, hey!
You're standing.
You could, you could also say I was squeaking, too. I mean, there's, there's that. So you've got an opportunity to partner with whoever wants to buy this piece of property, and engage with them and say, we want to work with you, and we want to use our future dollars in here to help reduce that cost. I'm sure council member Hopping runs into this in his business out in the world. And you enter into that to essentially reduce that cost for that developer, with the condition that what you get from, from the outcome is what the community desires. And if you don't have an opportunity to get that, then you tell them, no, we're not interested in that. And that gets back to my comment that, that sharebacks, any public-private partnership, is a decision by the city council, and is not a right. It is entered into, in my opinion, and when we have done it, it is to maximize the benefit of what the community wants on a particular piece of property, where we see, and where the city council sees, that there is a long-term benefit to the community, not just to the property owner. So, yes, sir?
Just wanted to mention two things, when you talk about reduce the cost, when you're talking about that, that financing only relates to the public improvement component, not the 25 million purchase, it's the 20 million public improvement, which are, like relocation of utilities that run under the property, dealing with the floodplain mitigation, dealing with roads and lights.
Correct, thank you for the clarification, yes. We're only talking about the public improvements.
And, and just so that, I'll use a, an example of real life, Littleton Village has disclosed one tenant, at this point in time, of their 250,000 square foot commercial allowance. And that's, they didn't even have to do that, but that's, of the 250,000, and we know that they've gone through and they've put in some curbs and et cetera that are going to be there, but there's only one tenant disclosed at this point in time, as far along as that project is.
That's correct, yep. And that is, I mean, that's, that's why we're not going to know. And, and part of this, and you guys know this, is we're, we're talking about architecture, land use, what the zoning is, what's the access, I mean, we're, we don't, and I said this the other night, we don't have the, I mean, I shouldn't say we don't have the right, but our land use code does not make a social value judgment about what it is when I open that door and walk in. Do you like Starbucks? Do you like Walmart? Do you like Costco? That's not how we make land use decisions, we make it based upon the architectural components, the traffic impacts, et cetera, et cetera. So, so we're over now, so I want to try to wrap it up, but really what I want you to know is, nothing is happening on the site, it does appear that somebody is under a contract for it. I did talk to the Enzer family about this idea that we could have a design competition, and that's when they said, well, we can't, because it's under contract, so, but now they know about the design competition, so maybe it'll sit in the back of their heads, and maybe they're watching, and they'll call me tomorrow and say, that sounds like a great idea, cancel the contract. But in the meantime, I think part of the conversation that the council can have is, if and when something comes in, what do we want to do as an alternative? What are the conditions by which you would want us to really sit down and, and enter into negotiation with this person? Because at the end of the day, if, if somebody can figure out how to make this work, and it meets with the interpretation of our land use staff, we're going to get whatever that is. And so to talk to Bill's comment again, we can either let it happen to us, or we can be a participant in that conversation. Did you have something? Yeah, sorry.
Well, are you, are you wrapping?
Yeah, I, yeah, I can answer questions, or I'll sit and squeak.
I just, if council will indulge me for a moment, this, you know, this is a substantial portion of District Four, clearly, and I've, for years have had conversations with the neighborhoods surrounding that area regarding what's going to happen, and over the years, there's been plenty of rumors, and innuendos, and things going on. You know, if, if this property, if we had developed it, if, if back in the 80s it had developed, it would probably be under redevelopment now. It really is, you know, a capstone project for the community, and it always has been viewed that way. I mean, it's a substantial amount of property for an infill community, and, and you don't want to get it wrong, you've really got one chance to get it right. About three years into my, my first term, I met with the Enzers, and it was just myself and the Enzers, and I had a conversation with them, very similar to the conversation Michael had with them last week, about what would you be willing to work with us, to do with the property? I mean, at one point, you sat down with the, with the city, and you rezoned the property. Would you be willing to sit down with us again and work on some new planning? And, and the answer was, no, they weren't interested. About three years, three years later or so, Michael was on as city manager, and I was a mayor, and we met with them again, asked them the same questions, had the same answers. I've also, over a period of time, have met with about four different developers in the community, the, the general region, who are all developers who focus on innovative, community-driven development that works complementary to open space, because the Enzer property, one entire border of the Enzer property is, of course, South Platte. It's not the park, yeah, it is South Platte Park, and the river. And we know that there's some areas there where the property gets, gets close in, and it's been an area we've always had, had our eye on, in terms of making sure we take care of it. So, they have all been interested, and anxious, and enthusiastic about what could be done, some really fun and interesting things. And each of them spoke to the family, spoke to the property owners, and every time they came back, and nothing, there was nothing that could be agreed upon, and so they went away, and the property sat there. And as, as we know, it's been for sale, and then under contract, and then back for sale again, and just kind of going back and forth. This is, this is, in many ways, one of those things that we're in a situation where, because of the zoning that's on there, we could end up with exactly what is there. It is a use by right, and we saw what just happened with another use by right. This is also a piece of property, as Michael has explained, that is incredibly challenging financially, because not only of its size, but grading and the infrastructure alone is probably enough to keep a lot of developers away. The fact that we could potentially end up with, with an urban renewal on it, depending on what happens with the county, there would be TIF financing available, if that doesn't happen, we have opportunity to do shareback, or other incentives, and we've all talked about that. Quite honestly, I mean, I am not willing at this point to leave any of those on the table, or an op, for a use by right development of this piece of property. It's too big. It's, it's too important to this community to provide, I think it would be doing a complete disservice to what we have done in terms of supporting smart development with incentives. Breckenridge Brewery have remodeled King Supers. So, the, well, I believe that those incentive programs are valuable tools, and I think that when used right, they do improve the community. I believe that this property, with this current zoning, should not be available, should not be viable for that. I would like to suggest that we have staff bring back to us Tuesday night, a resolution that basically says, that takes all the public money off the table, incentives, TIFs, sharebacks, off the table for a use by right development on this property. That does a couple of things. Number one, I think it says pretty clearly that we want a voice in this, in this development. We want to have, this needs to be a public process, this needs to be a community project. And that a developer who is willing to do that would probably be more receptive. And it also says that if you are looking at doing this with that, this is just to let you know, that's not going to be available, and you can make other plans. This doesn't take away any rights, land rights, property rights, land use rights, as Michael said, the zoning is the land use, the financing is just, the incentives and the public monies are, are the financing. So I think, you know, that's my proposal, I'd like to, you know, with their support, for this to go back to staff and have them bring back something on the 19th, I don't know what it would, the legality, you know, the legalese and all of that, the city attorney can work through that. But if you'll indulge me one more minute, that piece of property is, has been talked about by the community for years, I think we all have some ideas of what we'd like to see on there. I know some people would like it to remain as open space. And I had a occasion to do a little Netflix, Netflix binge-washing, and there's a show, which I do recommend, and I've been recommending, because I think it has a lot of great, great value to it regarding city government and other issues. It's called High Profits, and it was done by CNN, it's a documentary, and was on Breckenridge. Breckenridge, Colorado, in relationship to pot on Main Street. And it was a years, a year documentary, they went through the whole year, of a pot shop on Main Street who had been allowed one year to be there with recreational license. And it goes through the struggles the city council went through, the community went through, the whole marijuana industry, it's just, it's, it's, and it's in our backyard, so it was really very interesting. But one of the things that I thought about with this, when I was watching that, is, is that the, the mayor and the city council, and many people in the community, continued to talk about their brand, their brand, their brand. And I know Breckenridge is a different community, because it's a destination, a recreational destination, and so they have more of a national and international brand. But, you know, this is the type of property that, the size of it, the location of it, the importance of it, that is part of, and should be part of, what is our brand, and what is important to Littleton. And I don't think that anything on those drawings has, shows any resemblance to what I would hope any of us in this room think is Littleton's brand. So, I guess that's kind of my summation of it, I'd like to know, I mean, if we have, there's three others that support bringing this back on Tuesday, then we can discuss it more as a resolution.
Any discussion of Debbie's issue?
Just one, one question for Michael, do you need the resolution, or just a sentiment?
I, it, I mean, either works at the end of the day, but I, you know, a resolution or a motion, a statement by the council, if I understand it correctly, it's really, you know, you come to us with an innovative, future-looking project, and we'll entertain the thought of partnering with you, and if you don't, you, we're telling you out of the gate that you're on your own, so when they approach us, you know, having a resolution is a piece of paper that I can give to them, I'm pretty sure they're going to trust that if I say that, they're not going to risk these type of dollars, and spending money on civils and architects and all that type of thing. So, it's a motion by the council, not sure that sentiment alone does it, but it certainly could, if that's the will of the council.
I'll support.
Any other thoughts about that, whether it should be a resolution or a motion, and whether it's supported, Doug?
If you're serious about this, what you should do is stop the suit against the county. The reality is, the IGAs are between Lyft and the other taxing entities. The other taxing entities are the ones that make the decision on whether they're going to support the project or not. I'm not aware of an IGA that exists between the city and Lyft for sales tax.
There is not, correct.
So, we really have no legal, say, in what gets used as an incentive on any of the urban renewal plans at this point.
No, it requires an IGA, so Lyft cannot spend the sales tax dollars of the city until you enter into an IGA, so it is in a separate fund, but it cannot be utilized.
You've already passed, we've already passed urban renewal plans that say that they can use the sales tax, so I don't know where you're coming up with the IGA idea. So, if sales tax is a major component, which is what you said, the city can do a sales tax agreement without an urban renewal authority, and without an urban renewal plan. What you have right now is you've set up a structure, you've created a separate legal entity that has its own board, that has actually complete control over when they're going to give the incentives or not. I'm hoping that they would be sensitive to the council's direction, but they don't legally have to. So, if you really want to make a statement, then stop the Enzer, or the Santa Fe Urban Renewal Plan, stop the suit, the county will win, the plan becomes defunct, and then if the council wants to, in the future, provide an incentive through sales tax, they can do that, on their own, without urban renewal.
This, this resolution isn't about urban renewal, and this is about the, removing any public monies to assist with the building of, or the development of the property as outlined on those documents. I'm not opposed to, depending on what happens with the county, if we're granted the urban renewal designation, I'm not opposed to keeping that designation on there. I think if a good developer comes along, and he wants to do a good development, and he's willing to take his chances with a rezone project, and take his chances with asking for assistance in getting it done, then I think it's something that is viable, and I, I would, you know, support looking at that. I think that's, that may be what helps make the difference between what we want and what we don't want on that property. So, this isn't about removing that, this is about removing the opportunity, or letting the developer know, sending a clear message that public money are not, is not available for 1984's rezoning plan.
Well, the problem is, it's not the
Well, the problem is, it's not the council's decision at this point.
Well, it's our decision on sharebacks, it's our decision on giving other incentives, it's our decision on...
We've already passed a plan, the city has already passed a plan.
I have talked to the urban renewal attorneys and the city council. The LIFT cannot use the sales tax money from the city until the city council approves an IGA for the transfer of those dollars.
I would be fascinated to see that opinion in writing, please.
If the council desires it, I can ask for that. But I'm telling you, for the purposes of this conversation and relative to now what Councilmember Brinkman is asking for, that is a stopgap measure that is out there. So, and I'm not going to debate you, councilman, on the legality of that. I'm telling you that our attorneys on this issue are advising in that and have said, I can say that. So I'm not speaking out of turn, I'm speaking under the advice of our city attorneys, that that is a factual component and an administrative action by which the city council has to take. You created the tool for it, and with those dollars go into a separate account, those dollars are held by the city council. And in order for those, for LIFT to utilize those funds, you have to enter into an IGA because it is a different entity to transfer those funds from the city account to their account. So, and I think that might, that's probably not the direction councilman was looking for, direction from the council, but just to continue it.
I think it's also, and I know urban renewal has a lot of heroin in our community, but in a case like this, and I've, in my professional life, I, not that I'm not a professional councilperson, because, but, you know, we've, I've worked with urban renewal from the other end a lot, and it is a very powerful mechanism for the city to negotiate with the developer in terms of what, getting what that city wants in place. So to Councilwoman Brinkman's suggestion, it would give us additional leverage for the community to have a voice in what kind of development would go in that particular area. And this is a, it's a Keystone area. I mean, we need to have the ability to focus that into the community's need as much as we can, and having that, the ability to control that or have stronger input into that conversation is important. Because none of these financing mechanisms, and urban renewal and TIFs are financing mechanisms, are inherent in the land rights that someone buys. This is a mechanism from the governing agency to the land owner in order to facilitate the development for the community's long-term benefit. And if we pull those off the table, we can then leverage getting what the community wants. So I would favor the resolution.
So clarify, they do not necessarily need to ask for any money?
No.
They got deep pockets, whoever, they could do whatever because it's use by right.
Yeah. Or if I had $25 million and all I wanted to do was put a single-family house in the middle of it, I'm not looking at any public infrastructure. I'm just going to buy the land and plot my house in the middle and put a bunch of trees around the outside.
Or if they got the money for whatever infrastructure and they don't want to deal with us, right? So we don't necessarily have leverage. We don't necess, we might have it, we might not. If we have it, I would love to use it. You and I chatted about that, in terms of making something better than it might be otherwise, so.
Well, that's what this essentially does. It says, we're not going to give you public money if you are going to try to do a use by right. If you, if you, you know, the developer can look at that and say, I could use some help with this. Clearly, the community is sending a message that they want this to be thought out better. I'm going to go for the rezon. The rezon turns it into a public process, it turns it into a conversation. That's not a conversation.
So I'd like to focus, not to be so much on not the use by right, but unless what they do is something in cooperation with the city's vision. I mean, I'm trying to phrase it a little more positively.
That's hard to quantify.
Yeah, and we could, yeah, and if the council wants this, we can wordsmith, but I hear what you're saying. I think that's a good clarification.
Yeah, I mean, you and I chatted about it.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense that, and it makes a statement, I think this might be what Councilman Brinkman said, but it makes a statement, even if you're doing it under this zoning, that the council's, the community is not interested in seeing this built. And so, you know, to the extent that, you know, there's hurdles in the administrative process, there's still subdivisions that are going to have to occur through this that will come to the city council. I mean, just think about all the activity that occurred around Littleton Village. You know, you get, somebody's going to buy this at some point and put the residential on it, and they're not going to like how it was originally subdivided, they're going to want to re-subdivide it, there's going to be subdivision improvement agreements.
Yeah, so we get to make a decision about whether the street goes here or the street goes there.
Yes, but if you have some statement, motion, head nod, resolution.
But what I'm saying is if they come back with those things, it's not a big decision.
No, correct, they're administrative actions, correct. Yeah.
Going around the room, Jerry?
I would like to hear more from the attorneys first before we consider this. I'm not opposed to it completely, but I would still like to hear more from the attorneys on where we stand.
On the use of the sales tax?
Pardon me again?
The use of the sales tax?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And if we're going to make a resolution, I want to make sure it's covering all the bases. I don't want to, I need more time to think about before I can actually say yes or no on this.
Well, and I think what Councilmember Brinkman asked for was to bring it back for discussion under general business, I added that part of it, but under general business next Tuesday for council discussion. And we can certainly get you the legal opinion before then.
I'd rather, I would like to see the legal opinion and then consider. I don't see that there's a rush to do this. If there's no plans on the table, as far as we know, I don't see that we have to have this by Tuesday. I would like to have a discussion and contemplate what the attorneys have to say to us so we can give a good thought. I don't see the rush for Tuesday.
I am not a lawyer, but I would think that, isn't there, the deal is that if they submit plans, it freezes everything. So we could not have a resolution after plans are filed.
It's, I mean, there is no, there's no, so currently, what we've been told is it's under contract. And so that developer is, that potential owner is maybe, but we would hope, is thinking about what they would want to put on the site. So the sooner that the council, and I don't know where the body of the council is going to land, but the sooner that the council makes a statement about its desires, the sooner we can get that message out to the property owners, to the person that is going to, has it under contract, and to other people who may be interested in doing this. Does it have to happen next Tuesday? No, but that's what, that's what the request on the table is, and there's three people interested in having it brought back next Tuesday. And to Councilmember Clark's question, we can get the written version from the attorney of what I have just articulated in more eloquent legalese.
Well, so as I go around, Peggy, you were in agreement to see something next Tuesday? Phil, you're in agreement? Doug?
Agree with Jerry.
And that is, let's see the legalities before we make any kind of decision.
Well, which is, we will.
And we will.
We will see the legalities, but it would still happen Tuesday.
For discussion. I also, then I have Bill and Debbie who would like to see it come forward. And I, just to reemphasize, we're not going to see a suggestion for a resolution or a motion without the supporting legal opinion that tells us that what we're doing is...
The attorneys will write you a confidential memo outlining the condition that requires the council to approve an IGA before the sales tax can be utilized by LIFT.
Why would this be a confidential memo?
I'm pretty sure that our attorney is going to write you a confidential memo. If the council chooses to do it differently, they can so choose, but we, I know they operate from a place of confidentiality. I have said it so clearly, I've been cleared to say it. So I'm just telling you, that's where it's going to start. If the body says they want to release that, that attorney-client document, you can so choose so.
So we have two resolutions we've already passed on urban renewal. Neither one of them we followed. One of them, we're in a dispute with the county right now because the original offer that was made to them is not what actually showed up in writing. And we're going to do another confidential memo on a resolution for next week that we're going to discuss at a open meeting. How are we going to do that?
I've been asked to provide some direction and a resolution, and that's what I'm going to do.
Well, let's see how we do it. Let's see how we do it.
I have one thing, if we're through it. If we're at that point.
Yes, we are.
Okay, cool. Michael, how many acres did you say it was, is again?
It's about 122 on south of...
Thereabouts. So it's going to be developed someday.
Can I add on some of that? The 122 you get from what was north of Mineral to what's south of Mineral but wasn't there?
No, it's 129. I just wanted to make sure, because there was a... 122 developable.
Great, thank you, that's all I needed to know.
Remaining after the...
Correct. So, but it's going to be developed someday, whatever it's going to be, we have no idea. But my issue, my concern is, is the traffic impact that it's going to bring. Is there any possibility of a flyover or anything to that ability at that intersection? Something?
So we, so council gave us money, and you recall the FHU presentation, there was a short-term solution, which was about 11 million or whatever the number was. And there was a long-term solution on that intersection that was about 101, 20, I don't remember the exact number. And one of the other things that we've been talking about is taking that, and in fact, our Tri-Cities meeting, once we nail down a date, is going to be on Santa Fe because it's not, certainly that intersection is a cluster at this point, but we really need to be talking to CDOT about Santa Fe all through our community. You think about Sterling Ranch coming on to the south of us, Santa Fe is being improved from tight, and Titan Road's being improved as a component of that. It's going to get dumped out on C-470. Some of those are going to go east, some will go west, and a lot of them are going to go north. And it's already a bad situation. So the answer is, we have a $100 million flyover solution. CDOT's budget cannot handle that in the near future. It's, we want to get it on the step, so in 10 or 15 years or 20...
But I guess with these millennials not wanting to have cars, we'll be okay though, right? Everybody's going to...
I'm not holding my breath.
I mean, it's all ridiculous. I keep hearing people don't want to have cars someday, but yet we're going to have an issue.
My 14-year-old's already looking through the car wallet.
I hear you.
But, so we need to, the answer to your question is, there are solutions, they are huge dollars in which, and it's a state highway, so we need to be sitting in the Transportation Commission meetings, we need to be getting our needs on the step, we need to be making our regional director aware of what our issues are, and really start that conversation because other communities have been doing it, and so we're going to do it.
And I'm sure somebody will get the same calls, that, you know, the real issue seems to be traffic impact. I mean, that's what I was talking about. So that's, I mean, we're talking about what can be built, we have no idea what's going to be built, but yet we're hardly talking about the traffic.
Well, traffic, I think, just social issues, community, the impacts, the overall impacts of this development on the community and how we mitigate those. Because you're right, it will be developed in some fashion.
Yeah, I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Just as an add-on, too, a lot of times, in my experience, that a city will require certain deceleration lanes or whatever that become the developer's responsibility. So this is an example of where urban renewal can be used for the community's benefit in terms of requiring that those lanes be built, enabling that to happen, instead of getting caught in some hairy negotiation where the developer manages to...
Well, I'm disappointed we don't have flying cars, but now they're not going to have cars at all.
You know, Jerry, I'm looking into it just for...
Any additional information for all of us?
So I have a question. I know you don't know the answer right now, but has somebody plotted out how much of that corner is going to disappear with the additional lanes and so forth?
Well, so realize that the, what building, site mitigation for traffic depends on what the project is. So it depends on what the project is. I will tell you, which it may be this...
Well, no, 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 because...
The flyover, FHU took land on the north and southwest sides, as I recall.
But when we have the incredible traffic, future traffic projections on Mineral and Santa Fe, had nothing to do with this project. It had to do with all the development and stuff feeding in. So even if we didn't have this project, we're going to lose at some point a piece of the north and a piece of the west, east side of that property. So I'm just...
Unless they sell to us.
What?
The north is, I'm sorry. You can't take their property.
Well, it's one, well, right, but I mean, somehow or other, right? So I'm just wondering how much that eats into that property for any kind of...
FHU did a drawing showing...
Yeah, it's a tough intersection. We've got a bridge going over, we've got a train going on the other side.
Building, just like building.
A small airport would add.
Yeah, it's not like you've got four corners you can work with, you really just have...
Yeah.
Okay, I'm seeing some people packing up. We're adjourned.